The meeting will come to order. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
What do we mean? To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Gorsky, can I ask you to call the roll, please?
Certainly. Ms. Belko.
Here.
Ms. Bierman.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Here.
Mr. Pluri. Mr. Rutske.
Here.
Ms. Siegel.
Here.
Ms. Skirby.
Here.
Mr. Tofano. Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gorsky.
And in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in electronic notice provided by having a date, time, and place thereof posted August 13th, 2021 at all schools on the district website at https://www.munro.k12 nj.us, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. This evening, when we do our roll calls, Mr. Gorsky, if you could shake it up a little bit, either start from the other side or in the middle and we'll get everybody called just to have a little bit of a difference. Okay, so the first thing we shall do is have approval of the minutes. The first Public Board of Education meeting, June 16th, 2021. May I have all in favor? Oh, well, Mr. Gorsky, you're gonna do a roll call on that.
Motion and a second and then...
I'm sorry, motion and a second.
Michelle?
Yes.
I would like to table the minutes for the June 16th meeting.
That was the one that was tabled last week. We haven't really resolved that issue?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's acceptable. We'll have to have...
A second.
A vote on the table. Okay, so we have a first and a second, and we need a roll call to table that. Please.
Do we know why it wasn't corrected?
I think that we're still going back and forth in a discussion about it.
Mr. Rutske, motion to table.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
Motion to table passes.
Okay, we'll try to get that done by next month.
Madam President, if I may, I didn't... Discussion's not appropriate on a motion to table, so I didn't want to interrupt. But I think ultimately, from my viewpoint, that matter's gonna be resolved by the board. That is to say, you're gonna get a set of minutes from the board secretary presented as he sees fit, and the board is free to make a motion to amend the minutes or modify the minutes or what have you. And so my expectation is the same as yours, that this is gonna be resolved one way or the other at the next meeting, but my expectation is it's gonna be resolved by virtue of board action in some way.
Okay, thank you. The next Public Board of Education meeting is July 21st, 2021. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
It looked like Karen. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Any recusals or abstentions? Okay, thank you. Closed session, meeting July 21st, 2021. Motion.
Motion.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Second.
Second, Ms. Skirby?
Can I just... I know you're gonna run into... Can I just point something out that I... I don't know if this needs to be put back or not, but it says it's a virtual meeting, and it definitely was not virtual.
It said they closed...
Closed session.
Was... Yeah, that has to be...
We were live and in person.
Can we change that language?
Yes, we will change the closed session meeting minutes, July 21st, to be a physical meeting instead of virtual.
Was that the only one? Or where were they all put? Was that a mistake on all of them?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay, we didn't get to that yet. Okay, so this says virtual, and it was not. And that's the closed session, July 21st?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rutske. Okay, that'll be corrected. That was an in-person meeting. Did we have... We had a motion by Karen?
Adi and...
Okay. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, recused?
Recused.
Mr. Chiarella will recuse, and I'm...
You're gonna recuse also?
No, no, I'm sorry. I approve.
Okay, thank you.
Special Public Board of Education meeting, July 29th, 2021. Mr. Rutske?
Sure.
Did you want to say that...
Oh, no, this... The regular session is fine.
Okay.
It's only under closed...
Do you want to move it?
Sure, I'll move it.
Okay, anybody second? Karen, second? Or was that Katie? Okay, Karen seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections, recusals, or abstentions? None? Okay. And closed session, meeting July 29th, 2021.
That one has to be switched from virtual to...
Okay, wanna make a motion, and then we'll...
I'll make a motion.
Anybody else?
Sorry.
You want to second?
Second.
Okay? And so that one, the closed session meeting of July 21st, states that it was virtual, and that is incorrect. It was certainly in-person. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam President, who was the second on that motion?
I was.
Belko. Okay? And... And that's it? Okay, moving on. We don't have our student board members. We are gonna be welcoming them next month. Can't wait to see them. We hope they all had a very good summer, and we want them to have the absolute best year going forward. We're gonna try to do that as best we can. There's a board discussion, one-to-one initiative and parent fees. That's next. Dr. Alvin, did you want to start, or who?
Uh, Mr. Gorsky.
Mr. Gorsky's gonna start? Go ahead, Mr. Gorsky.
Not to pass the buck, but I would like to turn it over to Dr. Higgins, who prepared a new draft parent letter.
He was hiding behind the wall.
Mr. Higgins?
Dr. Higgins, would you like to take the podium and introduce the subject again?
Could you give us a little background on it before you, you know, tell us what this... The result is, please?
Sure. We asked by the board for the high school and the district administration to work on the iPad fees per family, per student. We came with a presentation, or we came with a suggestion that was discussed at the last meeting of reducing the fee from $85 a year to $85 per student for the life of the device. The discussion at the last Board of Education meeting that there was some imbalance and unfair payment to perhaps seniors and juniors who would only be using the device for two years to pay $85, which was a very good suggestion. We were asked to then bring back options to the Finance Committee, which we did last Wednesday. Two options were... Two suggestions were presented to the Finance Committee. One was that we would have a structured payment of $30 per device for the life of the device. So a senior would pay $30 for the year. A junior sophomore and a freshman would pay $30 a year for the life of the device, which would total about $90. Another option would be to pay for that device upfront. So if you did a structured payment where a 12th grader would pay $30, a 11th grader would pay $60, a 10th grader and a 9th grader would both pay $90, and then the next year, the only group that would pay for the money would be 9th graders, incoming 9th graders. And those... That structured payment plan was presented to the Finance Committee. At the Finance Committee, it was discussed that, and I'm sure Mr. Chiarella would lend to this discussion, it was discussed that there might be a possibility of no payment whatsoever for the devices. So I think at that committee meeting, there was a discussion of the committee that were we going to charge for... Surcharge for the device for whatever purposes, insurance, maintenance, per year, or was there going to be no payment whatsoever? I was asked to ask around to other high schools in the area or high schools that I had contacts with for their procedures and their policies for their devices. And I did have something type up. I gave it to Mr. Gorsky. I don't know if he gave it to the council, to the board. I don't know if I have copies, if you need it.
I haven't seen it. Letter of the box. Maybe you can give them out, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Do you have enough help?
So, as you can see, I was able to contact a number of schools in Middlesex County. I did contact two schools in Monmouth County that I had contacts with, and they're laid out for you. There's an array of different types of devices and different types of fees. There are some that have no fees. There are some schools that only charge for full damages and different types of breakages. There are a couple of schools that have optional insurance, for instance Highland Park and Sayerville High School. They give their students Chromebooks in their one-to-one program. They have optional insurance for people that want to purchase the insurance, and then if they do not purchase the insurance and something happens, they have to pay for their full breakage. As you can see, that the columns that I put there, there are devices... Piscataway High School is the only other school that uses iPads. They charge $49 per student, per device, per year, and that device for them covers three breakages a year. Okay, so the... The device for the high school in Monroe is an iPad, and the suggested price at the last Finance Committee meeting was a total of $90 for the life of the device, or $30 a year. And I think the change in the perspective from my point of view was instead of looking at this from the perspective of the student, we would look at it from the perspective of the device. So instead of a student paying $90, we would pay $30 a year for the device to be used. And a lot of discussion ensued on that, but this is the information that I was able to gather in the last week from those principals that got back to me in these other schools.
Madam?
Yes.
And Dr. Higgins, is your recommendation still Schedule 1 that was presented from last meeting?
So, to be blunt, my recommendation is that we have to get the iPads into the hands of our students as soon as possible. The financial discussion that has happened by the board is, you know, I'm not... I'm very limited in what I can input into that discussion as far as the finance is concerned. Whether it's charged $30 a year or if it's charged $0 a year is really...
Excuse me. We're talking about cost of iPads for your children, and I would just like everyone to be respectful of the speaker. We will all have a chance to speak. Thank you.
Whatever the price is, whether it's $0, $30, or $90, the importance to me is that the iPads, that we make a decision and we can get the information out to parents and we can get the iPads into the hands of our students. That would be my recommendation. I do... I do agree with Mr. Rutske's point from the last meeting that if we are to charge, it should be a scheduled charge, so no one is at a loss as far as the seniors would be paying for the full price and only using the new device for a year, and that we charge per device if we are going to charge, and we charge per year this way, having a fair balance to all of our students and families.
Shall we open that up to discussion? Okay. Karen, please.
So, coming up, the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion for resolution to adopt the $30 per year charge with revisiting this next year to see if we can take it down to zero, but after our philosophical discussion about where the burden should lie, we seem to have focused in on the $30.
I'll second that.
We're open to either schedule if there's... If business administrator has a preference, if one is better...
We'd like to ask questions. They did a first and second motion.
Ready?
For clarification, Ms. Bierman, there was a schedule of incidental damages when the items were returned. Would that still be in effect as the third accidental cracked screen in one school year, a parent would be responsible for $255.95, including $6.95 for shipping?
We'd like the parental charges to reflect whatever the district would be burdened from the program, so...
So it'll be the same one that was in effect previously?
Yes.
I won't read it into the record.
Well, one... We probably should read everything into the record when it's time. Mr. R...
I did answer my question, actually.
Anybody else need to speak on this matter? Go ahead.
I just have one question. What... If we're gonna charge the $30, what's the impact on the budget since we're missing the $85 with this new cost?
Over the three years or yearly?
Or yearly, actually yearly, because it's a deficit in the budget.
It's going to be very difficult to project that for the following reason. We've never had incidental charges reflect the actual costs of this schedule, and I'm hearing from Mr. Feldman that there are a lot of units that are returned, that are missing cords, have dollar store cords inserted instead of the apple, so we can't accept that back, have something wrong with the case and things like that. That's a significant dollar amount associated with that, but it really cannot be predicted. I could not get any statistical information on that, but as far as just charging $30 per student instead of, you know, the 90 before, that's $60 per student times 20...
Is it 26 or 2700?
20... It's gonna be about 2,900 with the additional ones that we have on a loner.
So, what do you want, 60 times 2,900?
Yes.
It's actually 55, isn't it? Isn't it 85 a year?
It was $85.
85.
Well, you would only... It wouldn't be the 20... It wouldn't be the 2,900. It would be how many students would be paying that, because you don't have 29... You wouldn't be charging the 2,900 if we have... If we have an inventory of a few hundred left in for loners.
And teachers, too, right?
That is correct. Well, there's about 2,700 students now. So if you wanted to just round it off in, you know, 2,700 times the difference...
We're going 55 the difference, like 148,500.
148,500 dollars per year. So if you want to, just for discussion purposes, say that's 150,000 per year. That could be offset by some of these return-back-without-pieces revenue items.
Minimum.
So, as I mentioned at the previous board meeting, this is not so much a fiscal concern at this time, because we do have a reserve account on the one-to-one balance sheet of 300 and...
Thank you.
$340,000 approximately. So that will offset that. There will not have to be cuts, in other words, because of this revenue shortfall. So the board's free to adopt this. This really, I repeat myself, is a philosophical discussion. If you feel like the burden needs to be lessened with the understanding that in the future, this could put stress on the budget development and could result in cuts, then, you know, you're free to do that.
So... Call the vote. Well, may I just ask another question? So we really have a three-year window at this point, and we can see how it goes, and in three years, the present board will have to review the data, and we will have to see. And like I said in one of the committee meetings, that it may be that the parents would rather have a nominal fee for these than rather have their taxes go up if we need to change the budgetary issues and the tax levy. So I think we have a three-year window. We should monitor it and then go forward. And so you called the roll? Okay.
Do you want to read the resolution and the fees?
Yes, please.
So we can get all this out? Okay. Understanding that, Ms. Bierman, this is still Schedule 1 fees in effect, $30 per year.
Yes.
Maximum of $90. Was that correct?
We said no maximum.
No maximum? Okay. All right, so $30 per year, per device, and there is a fee schedule. So those are the financial terms, and I'll be happy to put them in form of a motion. It is moved by Ms. Bierman and seconded by Mr. Chiarella that the Board of Education adopt a one-to-one initiative fee assessment for parents to be... Each student pays $30 per year, per device. There are... There is an ability, due to the Apple insurance, to have two devices with cracked screens in a year. The third one will result in a fee in accordance with the fee schedule. That I'll read to in a minute. The third incidental cracked screen results in a charge to the parent of $255.95, including $6.95 shipping. Unrepairable broken iPad is the same, $255.95, including $6.95 for shipping. The Logitech rugged Combo 3 case, if it's damaged, is $99.95. And the 20-watt USB-C iPad charger with cable is $39.99, if not returned exactly as issued.
Okay. So we have a roll call? Everybody ready? Okay, Mr. Gorsky, please.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
And Madam Board President?
Thank you.
How do you vote, Madam?
Oh, I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passed. We will now work with Dr. Higgins and send that final fee schedule to parents.
Dr. Higgins, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And everybody... And parents will be notified as the new fee schedule, which, by the way, for those who hadn't been to previous board, is less than they have been charged in other years. So thanks to this board for taking a look at that and trying to relieve the costs for parents. Okay. The next agenda item is public forum.
No.
I'm sorry.
Commitment report.
Yes. We did have committees, didn't we? All right. Anyone wants to start? Karen?
Katie. I'll start with the curriculum report. The Curriculum Committee met on August 11th at 6:00, and we were presented with several items from the supervisors and directors in the district. The first thing we were presented with was the Honors World Studies curriculum. The document was aligned to the student learning standards. The social studies practices are weaved throughout the document and the procedures. Their focus on this particular... In this particular curriculum is going to be on active citizenship in the 21st century. It's an interdisciplinary course that integrates historical topics and concepts in the literature. The course spans the timeframe from the Renaissance through the Holocaust. The integration, the students will participate in and collaborate on thematic projects. For example, in the Renaissance, the unit, the students are going to assume the role of a museum curator. In the art museum, they'll display artwork of the Renaissance, and they will also explain how their artwork reflects the characteristics of Renaissance art, excuse me, and the political and social ideologies of the era. It's a multifaceted approach, and as an honors-levels course, it is... There's enhanced discussion, variety of supplemental readings, and expanded writing tasks and research for that course. The next item that was brought up for discussion was brought up by Mr. Flown, Randy Flown, for Director of Special Services, and he brought into the Curriculum Committee a new curriculum called Practical Communications, and this is for students who need some development and encouragement in communications and practical uses of those communications. This course is geared mainly towards the transition to adulthood program students and allowing them to... Give them the confidence to be able to hold standard conversations, be able to listen and comprehend of certain conversations, and there will be certain practices that will be weaved in throughout the curriculum for the year for them to be able to take out into the community as well as into the high school, where they'll be performing jobs and job skill learning in the environment. The next item that was also brought up was the Introduction to Spanish course, and this is a course that is... Provides a language requirement for students who perhaps are not at a level where they have difficulty with English proficiency. They would need a little assistance, and so they've developed this course to allow the language requirement that the state requires for a graduation diploma. And this course will infuse language learning for Spanish, but also will infuse world culture information. It'll talk about the continents where the Spanish language is spoken. It'll talk about personalities and activities and things in the Spanish culture. It will also talk... We'll also learn the law... Excuse me, about using Spanish words for weather and directions and being able to get around to the different areas, so that program is there. The other program is the Middle School Reading Program, and that is a program that will prepare students with visualizing and verbalizing and assist students in all of their classes to increase comprehension and comprehension and reading skills that are needed through all the different courses that are offered throughout high school and middle school curriculums. The AP... The next curriculum that was offered for discussion was the AP Calculus BC class, and that was presented by Ms. Gasko, and that was... That is set up as per the College Board. It explores all the concepts and methods and applications of integral calculus, including topics as parametric, polar, and vector functions and series. Students will perform experiments and investigations. They will learn skills such as expressions and values, connecting representations, justifying reasoning and solution, using correct notation, language, and mathematical conventions to communicate results, and all those knowledge obtained will use to be applied numerically and analytically and graphically to have full conceptual understanding. The next item that was presented was problem-based learning for all grade six students. Problem-based learning is a secondary math class for all sixth graders. It focuses on real application of sixth-grade math curriculum. It allows the students to explore real-life situations. The intent is to strengthen grade six mathematical concepts. They will have units on data where students will create a statistical question. They also have a unit on rational numbers. They work in groups, geometry, proportions, financial literacy, and then they incorporate it into the curriculum, the new documents for the NJ 2020 SLS Career Readiness Life Literacies and Key Skills, as well as Computer Science and Design Thinking. This class, which I found very interesting when it was presented, this is for all sixth grade students, no matter their level. So if they're an honors student or not, they will take this class, and it's the exact same class for all students, and mixing those students together. So I thought that was a very interesting piece. The next presentation that we had was AP Literature and Composition, and that class was presented by Dr. Rozell, and it's designed to take students through a collegiate-level literature course, gains exposure to early literature in the Middle English, subsequent major literary movements and contemporary works. The key revisions to the curriculum included alignment to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, and they incorporated additional texts as outlined in the syllabus, and basically the beginning, the... It's organized chronologically, going from the beginning of the English language, from Celt and German influences to Middle English, and progresses through major literary movements to include writers and works, poetry prose, focus on literary devices and literary criticism, and academic writing. They're each done in brief two- to three-week units. They will be working on full text novels and books to work through that particular class. Then we were presented with an update on the summer programming from Zach Maralda, and it was a very interesting presentation about how the summer curriculum that was infused through those students that needed to make up credits or to be able to take classes so that they didn't have to retake them again next year. Very successful, 99% success rate, which we saw in a report from this week, and he'll have further information, I believe, at our next meeting to give us... Dr. Lehman, is that correct? We'll have a further presentation?
Yeah. Well, it's either gonna be next month or the month after.
Okay.
Once we get all the data together.
Yeah. There was also successful, and I've heard from some parents in the district and people out there, the STEM program was successful, the music program was successful. We also integrated some things with the rec department. So for, you know, we had a very successful summer program that was put out there, and I'm interested to hear what the end results were. So... And that is the curriculum report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belko. Next, um, Mr. Nikotinsky.
So the agenda for Personnel Committee was the vacancy list, the exit survey, lead nurse job description, and we went over the substitute renewals. That's it.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Kirby, please.
Yes.
You have two committees to report on?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so in policy, we discussed the iPad regulation, um, that has been outdated for quite some time. Um, so I guess now that we have, um, uh, had a motion to change the price, we'll have to update that regulation in our next Policy Committee meeting. Uh, also, we, on the agenda tonight is a first read to, um, to update.
Sorry, one minute. Let, let me just, we have a, sorry.
That's okay. Uh, the use of school facilities, Regulation 7510, uh, we made some suggested updates to that. One of them, uh, in the, in the regulation, it said that the, uh, schools could not be u- the buildings cannot be used on the weekends. We changed that to say they could be, um, depending on custodial coverage. Uh, we also talked about, uh, putting language in there about the buildings being able to be used on a half a day, um, and I think that we were going to have an update, um, from Mr. Tag about that, um, due to some union issues that that could possibly cause. Uh, but that was something that we discussed at length about allowing, uh, the buildings to be used on half-days as well.
Did, did, excuse me, did we need to wait for any, uh, advice from Mr. Tag or we're just gonna change it?
We didn't put the half-days into the regulation. It was just a discussion that we had.
Okay.
So that, I don't think that has been changed in there.
It has been changed. It has been updated to include the half-days.
To include the half-days?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. Good.
And, and policies generally can be revised at any time based on the board's, um...
Yes, and something I thought of after the policy, uh, meeting was that, you know, a lot of our half-days are half-days for students, but they're not half-days for the staff. So they are full-day, uh, workdays. So that, the issues that we were talking about, a four-hour session for students, it's still a full-day normally for, for the staff. So I don't think that would, um, come into play there. And then just another thing, uh, that we had talked about in policy, uh, previously was getting the regulation book, um, the link to that on our website through Strauss Esme. Uh, we have our policy link on there, and I know, Dr. Elvick, thank you, you gave the committee, um, the two big huge binders of the regulations that we were asking to see. And I see on the agenda tonight that, um, we're being asked to approve a hundred-dollar fee, um, to have, um, the regulations also on the website. So I think that is a great addition to have on our website. Um, I know that previously, you know, we were told that it could be, uh, a large cost. I think a hundred dollars is definitely a fee that we should be willing to pay to put these up on the website because, you know, in, again, in our, um, quest for true transparency in our district, the regulations are really the rules that, or, or the, the guidelines for how the policies are being followed. So you can have a policy, but behind that policy is all of the information for how that policy is going to be carried out, and that's important for, uh, the community to see. So I'm glad that that's on the agenda tonight and that we'll be able, hopefully, if it's passed, to get that put on the website. And then we have a few, uh, po- policies, uh, for second read. We didn't discuss them as there were no changes, um, from last month's meeting during the first read. So that was the Policy Committee meeting.
Anyone have a question, Mr. Rutske?
So, two-part question. So, at any point in time, was, um, re-categorizing religious organizations discussed? Cause I, I see it stayed, I guess it's either B or two, but was it discussed on how to handle or how to view religious organizations when using the facilities?
Uh, that, we discussed that in policy.
Am I a month behind?
No, no, I'm trying to remember from BG and T and, and the policy. I know we were not making any change to the policy for that. Um, so it was discussed, but it's not on here because we're, we, it was not being changed.
Right. Okay.
Can I, can I say something about that? Uh, one of the, one of the points of discussion was that because of budgetary constraints, that we felt that if, if we were giving, uh, if we were opening up the facilities for free, then the cost of the burden of the cost of the, of the services, the actual custodial cost, salary cost, which are usually the greater of the costs for our district, um, that we would have to bear and pay that, and we just don't have the ability to do that, cause that would, may ultimately take away from student instruction and things like that. So it was discussed at great length. That was the reason why it wasn't changed. If, if we had a different, if we had different budgetary issues, um, or non-issues, we might have considered it. It wasn't, had nothing to do with the requister or the request or any of those services. It had to do with just concerns about, um, defraying any, any additional costs.
Okay. And so the second part of that question is, are, are the buildings available for facility use effective immediately or starting September 1st? We're, we're open for business?
We are open for business, and we've been, um, approving building use.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Siegel, did you have a question?
Yeah, I actually had a question about, um, board policy, uh, bylaw, 0164.2, the board member participation at board meetings using electronic device. It's on second reading, and the question I had is, I know we implemented this last month, um, for committee meetings where board members could call in. Is there some reason why this policy didn't go through three readings before we implemented it? Cause usually we go through three readings.
Two.
I thought it was three readings, four. It's two readings? Okay. I just wanted to double-check on that.
And again, if, 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 if the board in the future has issues with any policy, they can ask to have it revised and, and re-discussed in, in the policy.
Okay. I just wanted to check on that. Thank you.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
May I respond to that?
Yes, Kathleen.
Uh, my request to be able to participate virtually was based on the current board policy of, for medical reasons.
What, right. The, in the, in the first time we did it, I think two months ago, was a test case, and the last two times there were medical, uh, exceptions that I, that I did grant.
Thank you. I was just curious.
Yeah. But the pu- the public should know that as well. Uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Kirby, did you want to continue?
Uh, yes, and then we had our Community Engagement Communication Committee, and we went over the sponsorship program that is being created. Uh, Mr. Maraldo and Mr. Dowling, uh, came and gave an update, so thank you for, to them for all of the hard work that they're doing on this. Um, it seems to be moving in the right direction, and now we are going to start working on, um, uh, a short-term, uh, pricing of possible, um, sponsorship items, uh, to go along the fences, banner ads. Um, so looking forward to getting, uh, that because, uh, a- as much as we, as much revenue as we could bring in from this will support, support the budget. So, uh, thank you again to Mr. Maraldo and Mr. Dowling for coming and giving us that update. Uh, it's really moving along quickly. And I think that was, is that it?
I think the other piece was the letter writing.
Uh, we had discussed, uh, writing to Senator Greenstein to invite her to come to an upcoming board meeting. Um, I know we, it didn't work out for this month, but potentially we could look at doing that for September.
They'll revisit that.
Yes.
Anything else?
And that's it.
You're done?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, will you be reading something for Mr. Chiarella as Vice Chair of Buildings and Grounds?
Well, I have two committee reports.
And, and finance, yep.
Finance as well. So I'm, I'm going to review Buildings, Grounds and Transportation first, because that's a little bit more lengthy. Uh, so on the, on August 11th, we had our Buildings, Grounds and Transportation Committee meeting. The first topic we discussed was the, was transportation bus contracting. We had a, a parent, uh, who sent an email regarding, uh, some awful experiences that they had with our contract busing. Uh, we had our Transportation Director, Kathleen McDonald, come in, and, um, she, she, uh, explained what the resolution to the matter was and what we were doing to ensure that that doesn't happen again, and particularly what we were gonna do to ensure that this, you know, that, that we fixed this route for this, for this child. Um, the, the one thing, though, that, that we, we, we discussed at length was that we're going in the right direction here with, with, as far as, um, getting rid of contract busing and get it, and, and increasing our own fleet, which does cost more money, but we have had so many issues in the past with contract busing. Everything from being able to vet the drivers and, and background check the drivers and communicate with the drivers and things like that, where we have equipment on our buses. We know where our buses are at all times. We have cameras. We have the ability to contact the drivers in- instantaneously, and they have the ability to contact, uh, you know, the central office instantaneously. So, um, I, you know, the committee, although we discussed this one individual instance, the committee, though, um, had a lot to say about, we need to continue on this road and we need to be in-house as much as possible with our drivers and our buses. We also, um, reviewed the progress for SSP Architects, so the proposed schedule for the limited design study for the new school at Applegarth, uh, that wa- that was reviewed. The committee requested that the schedule be posted to the district website, and the committee requested a two-hour special board meeting on the 30th, uh, August 30th at 7:00 PM, and the purpose of the meeting will, uh, be to review the, uh, architect designs and the related cost estimates. We was, we also, uh, reviewed the stadium field, track and bleachers. So the committee, we were, we were giving, given, um, information from Edwards Engineering Group and DI Group Architecture for replacement of, of, uh, the turf, uh, and track and field and the, and the bleachers, and the committee decided to, uh, shelve the bleachers for now, because we ha- we still have about five years on those bleachers before they're in need of repair, but the turf field needs to be replaced right away. So that's, it's already having issues. Uh, it, it rained, it happened to have rained right before the meeting, and, and, uh, Mr. Tag was explaining that the turf actually lifted because of the water, and, and so there, or, or it's, it's now wearing away. It's, it's just to the point where it's not useful and it's, uh, it's becoming dangerous. So the board, uh, is, is, uh, working to put that forward, and then we're looking also to have a shared services agreement with the township to, uh, to fund the bleacher project. The, um, Oak, we also discussed the Oak Tree Baseball Field electronic, uh, electric upgrades, electrical upgrades. So the administration advised that the local licensed electrical contractor, Walter Danley Electrical Contracting LLC, has offered to provide free electrical labor and, uh, to install the dedicated electric feed to the scoreboard. Uh, and then that will be done in condition with the Ma- the Monroe Township Baseball Association. Uh, they had installed the Oak Tree School Baseball Field. So the materials and site restoration labor will be provided by Monroe Township Board of Education. So we'll provide the parts and the, and, and, and the labor and those kind of things, and he will, uh, Mr. Danley will do the work. And so, um, he will also get the necessary electric permit, electrical permits from Monroe Township Building Department and provide the certificate of insurance. Um, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Danley for, for doing this, and, um, I think that this was, I think this is a great thing. I mean, he's doing this for free in order to help out the district. So I have a, I have a motion that I'd like to read and put forward and, and then have the board discuss it and, and vote on it. So as recommended by the Buildings, Grounds and Transportation Committee of Monroe Township Board of Education, I hereby move that the Board of Education authorize and approve local licensed electrical contractor Walter Danley Electrical Contracting LLC to provide electrical services to install a dedicated, uh, electrical feed to the scoreboard, which the Monroe Township Baseball Associate, uh, Association has installed at the Oak Tree School Baseball Field. All materials and site restoration labor will be provided by Monroe Township Board of Education. Walter Danley Electro- Electrical Contracting LLC must obtain the necessary electrical permit from Monroe Township Building Department and provide the Business Administrator slash Board Secretary with all required insurance certification before commencement of work. The Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator slash Board Secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action of the Board of Education dated August 18th, 2021.
Second.
Karen?
Katie.
Katie.
It's Katie?
You two have to sit apart, so I can hear your voices from a different direction.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Chiarella, seconded by Ms. Belko.
Any discussion questions or anything? No? Please call and roll.
Yes. Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Kirby.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Rutske.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Yes, and I would like to thank publicly Mr. Danley for being so generous to the children and the community itself. He is a local, um, a businessman, and we very much greatly appreciate that he is doing this, um, for us. So, thank you.
And I have, uh, one more report.
Please.
So, we also had a Finance Committee meeting on, uh, August 11th. So I, I'm not going to go through and read the iPad parent one-to-one initiative, uh, fees. We already talked, talked about that. Uh, I would like to thank Dr. Higgins from, for not only attending our meeting, but also coming here tonight and delivering the information and doing some homework. As you can see with what he, he provided us, he, he called around to several districts and, uh, was able to get us that information, so thank you. So the, the other two things that we talked about at the Finance Committee meeting was the, was the audit update. So Mr. Gorski informed the committee that pursuant to the board resolution appointing HFA to provide auditing services, that he sent HFA contract to the attorney for review. Uh, the attorney made some revisions, which HFA found acceptable, and the contract was executed. So upon execution of the contract, HFA scheduled and has begun audit work for the year ended 6/30/21. Mr. Gorski informed the committee that the auditors have begun their assessment of, uh, audit risk by making inquiries of staff and testing internal controls. They have also begun to review, uh, the minutes. Next, they'll provide administration with, uh, a transaction of, uh, a, a list sample and then request payroll information to be audited. And so, thank you for that. Um, and then the last thing that we discussed was, uh, 2020, 21, 22 lease purchase update, and so Mr. Gorski updated the committee that the 21, 22 lease purchase, uh, has concluded with the closing of all lease documents. So we're good there. And that's, that closed on, that's the conclusion of my reports.
You want to talk about that?
Thanks.
Um, Mr. Chiarell, if, if I may, um, we did talk about the, uh, repairs to the turf field and the track, and we were going to have, we, we could have a resolution tonight or we could save it till the 30th, um, but I would like, if, if you will, um, Mr. Gorski, just to update us on that a little bit more with the finances and some of the changes. We sent, we sent the, um, the letter back to Edwards and they revised it. Remember, I had, I had situation because originally we had included the bleachers and then the bleachers came in a little too high. So can we just have an update through Mr. Gorski?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. Postscript to the Building, Grounds, Transportation Committee meeting at approximately 2:30 this afternoon, I received a revised proposal that the board had requested from Edwards Engineering Group for the turf field replacement project, call it a general term, with the exclusion of the bleacher components. And, um, the, the major construction items are artificial turf replacement with drainage upgrades, $830,700. Construction time estimate, six weeks. Running track reconstruction, $657,200. Estimated time, nine weeks. Construction of new long jump event arena outside the stadium, $142,600. Estimated to be eight weeks. Total estimated cost of construction, $1,630,500, which is under the amount that was previously disclosed to the township officials by Mrs. Arminio, and I believe they found it preliminarily in their range of acceptability.
So if the board feels that they'd like to move this forward tonight, we could have a resolution to do so, um, and then I'll present it to, uh, the, you know, the mayor, and we'll have a discussion. So it's not, so this resolution would be just to present it to the mayor or just to move forward with this?
I believe it would be to accept, um, the proposal from Edwards, which unfortunately the board has not seen yet. I went over the major components of it, and we've seen it all before. The only thing that's been removed is the, um, the bleachers.
Okay. Or, or we can hold it off until the 30th. It's up, it's the board's decision, and then we'll get the information out to everybody. Is that acceptable? You want to hold off? Uh, Karen, please.
So, this has a shared services agreement in place or it's still in discussion?
No, we don't. We have, we have a tentative, a tentative discussion with the mayor, and he's been very gracious. I don't think that we're gonna have a problem, but we have to do it all officially.
But we would get that in place before we activated contractors.
Ms. Arminio, I believe, uh, from the last discussion was that we were, uh, to get this passed first, a revised proposal, and then authorize, uh, the administration to go into a shared service agreement with the township.
That's the board's decision. I see.
And, uh, by the way, it was the township's attorney who was to prepare the shared services agreement, uh, assuming the cost of all that.
But we were waiting for more detail is really what the, what this, so if we can, if we can go ahead with this, um, we might as well get it done because we do have, you know, the turf field needs. the turf field needs.
I would take a vote and see where it is.
Okay. Would anyone like to move that we have a resolution on this?
Yeah.
Karen?
Move to take a vote.
Do you want to read?
Sure. It is, it is recommended to the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education to accept and authorize the Edwards Engineering Revised Study dated August 17th, 2021, indicating a total cost of $1,630,500 for the restoration of artificial turf replacement, running track reconstruction, construction of a new long jump event area outside the stadium. And superintendent of schools and the business administrator, board secretary are directed to implement this action of the board.
Karen, now, sorry. I was.
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Chiarella? Okay, any more discussion on this?
Yeah, I just have a question. So Mr. Tagg, when he was, when we were hearing the discussion in BG&amp;T, it sounded as though the turf was definitely in need of repair immediately, and he made indications that it possibly could affect our sports programs for this coming year if we didn't act quickly on this. So if we, if we're approving this to go back to the mayor's office to discuss a possible shared services agreement, at what point will we, at what point will we ask for a decision to be made, seeing that, you know, it could take a couple of months for some of these to be done, and our school's going to be opening up and sports are going to be taking place, especially ones that use the turf field? So my only, my only concern is that, you know, how long are we going to allow the town to have to make the decision? And if they decide that it is not within their budget, will we, are we going to move forward with it anyway?
Well, that, madam?
Okay, yes, please.
That's an interesting consideration. If we are unsuccessful with the township in negotiating a shared service agreement whereby the township is going to pay for said costs, then there are some options that could be presented to the board. You could authorize a new lease purchase for all of this work, and you could finance this over a five-year period, so you will only have to put maybe 20% of it into this year's budget through, through budget adjustments. Or if you wanted to, also, you could defer the principal from this year to next year, so you'd only be paying the interest. So as a fallback, that's not too bad of a situation, but I concur with Ms. Armenio. From what I heard from Mr. Tagg, this field is in a situation where it's not going to pass the GMAX test, which are concussion tests because of the, forgive the word, sponginess of the field that's decaying.
If we have those, if we have financial options, but I will, I will, I will call the mayor tomorrow.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions or concern? Mr. Rutske?
I just assumed, you just struck something. I assumed when shared service, it was going to be a 50-50 financial agreement, but based on what I just heard, so the Monroe Township.
Tentatively has, we are in discussions and negotiating that.
Wow, okay, very nice.
In its totality, correct. Well, the, the, the field and the turf field are used by the full community. It's a community-wide, the shared services comes in because the full community uses it.
Sure, of course.
Okay? Roll call, please.
I just, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I had one more question.
Yes, please.
I didn't see you, I'm sorry. I just want to understand that this motion is being passed, but there's no contingent here that if the township decides to say no, we will still go forward with this project and move forward and figure out how we're going to find this.
I think, I think we are.
That's what I need to understand before I vote.
I think we are compelled to do that based on the condition.
Because this motion has nothing in it that says we won't do this if the township does not agree to share services.
Right.
I just want to make sure that's clear.
If you, if we want to put something in that says we will.
I'm not asking for anything to be put in, I just want to make sure that it's clear to everybody that there's nothing in the motion that says we're going to do this only if it's shared services.
That is, madam, that is correct.
Thank you.
The intent and the spirit of this shared service agreement is for the township to pick it up alone, but if circumstances change and we're not fruitful in that discussion.
I have my answer, I'm good. We can go ahead.
Then another financing option would have to be proposed to the board.
Right. We'll talk about that, okay.
Ready?
Yep.
Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Ms. Rutske.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
And Madam President.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
I will move forward with that tomorrow. Is, are there any other committee reports? No? Okay. The next forum is the public forum, and we will invite everyone to speak. What we do is you'll, you'll come up to the podium, you'll line up. Please give your name, your address, and you have.
Four minutes.
Four minutes at this time. We have, just so you know, for next meeting, we have a policy that will extend that to five minutes, but as of this meeting, we have a four-minute.
We didn't extend it. We changed it so that we stop the clock when the answers are given. But that's next time.
The next time, yes. Yeah.
But it's not changed to five minutes.
Oh, it's not five minutes, it's four minutes. Okay, sorry, I am corrected. Next meeting, it will be four minutes, and if, we will stop the clock if the administration or any of us answer, but tonight, it's four minutes in total. But we did approve for, for the next meeting, an additional time for the public, okay?
Shall we?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. First person, please, your name and your address.
And this is the agenda.
And it, and the, anything you speak to tonight in this forum is just on the agenda. So if you have something that is not on the agenda, there is another opportunity for you to speak after we do our business. So if it's an agenda item, you're welcome to speak. Go ahead.
Well, my child's always on my agenda.
Well, yeah, we're talking about the business agenda, we get that. And your child is, is on this as well.
I have a question for you. If you don't want to answer it, that's your choice. My name is Joelleland Tariano, I live at 36 11th Avenue.
Go ahead.
My son is autistic, and I was told today by his doctors that he does not have to wear a mask legally in the school. Are you guys going to keep forcing him to? Dr. Allen, do you want to answer that?
I don't, I can't answer anything about a specific student.
Well, we need answers today, not tomorrow.
That would be something that.
Well, we have it in our system.
That they would have to reach this, reach this, reach out to the school.
Okay. So can you just repeat that?
Yeah, I, I'm not going to answer about any specific student in a public forum. My suggestion would be to reach out to the school nurse and have that conversation.
So you're not going to answer the question?
No.
So what point of, why, why are you here? For nothing?
I, I believe we have, next on the agenda, second, after this, the superintendent will discuss the return to school and some of these. We are going to try, look, we have a very big school system, and we are going to try to maintain, you know, order and, and safety of everyone, okay? Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Marisa Meoni.
Can you use your microphone, please?
Yep, sorry. Small people problems.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Emma. I am Marisa Meoni, I live at 5 Daraboli Avenue, and we are here to talk about mask mandates. Whether that's on the agenda or not is really not important.
It happens to be on the agenda.
What's important, it is something that we are forcing on children that is absolutely insanity. I moved here a year ago from New York, four days into the 15 days to flatten the curve. Seventy-six weeks later, we are here with my seven-year-old and my five-year-old, petrified to walk into a building because their faces have to be covered. They don't know a single teacher, a single student, a single staff member, because we have been here with nobody but us. Now they're told in September that they need to go to school for seven hours with their faces covered, but there is no science that proves that that is safe or the right thing to do. My daughter is suffering from anxiety now, and every day I find her crying over just wanting to live a normal life. So I brought her and my son and my husband so that each one of you face her and tell her, "Why is it that she can't have a normal childhood? Please answer her, because I am so tired of crying with her." You have the floor to answer this seven-year-old child. Oh, goddamn it, I can't wait, though. Who cannot? Woo! Tell me, you went to school, you went to school, you went to school, you went to school, you, 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 you. You are a common child, this girl's not a child. She is seven and afraid to go into a building. Tell me what your answers are. I am sick of this world, and you should all be embarrassed, embarrassed to force a mandate on a seven-year-old.
Children are not at risk. Zero percent. Children are not at risk.
Okay, thank you.
I don't care if I need to.
Clear this, clear the room, come on.
Okay, no, 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 we have, fine. So we can't have this. Okay.
And this cannot happen.
All right. Is it open or? No, no, stop.
Use us.
Okay, wait a minute. I think.
I am fighting for these kids. You guys are all saving them, hiding behind your desks, fighting for these children, they own the future. They own the future. Woo!
Okay.
You're not being powered, you're just children, fucking sheep.
I, sir.
We can't have a meeting.
Okay. Mr. Pirro.
Thank you.
You're a sheep.
Okay.
You're a sheep. Get ready for the signs.
Okay.
Is it Vouchy, the criminal, or Bill Gates, the eugenicist?
Wait, wait a minute.
That wants to capsize from nine billion to five hundred thousand.
Okay.
He thinks he gives a shit about children?
When I, when I, when I first spoke to you, sir, I invited you in, I believe, in public, your ability to speak, however, you cannot.
This is not being mixed off.
If you, if you keep disrupting it, we will have to, Mr. Pirro, not yet.
I'm waiting.
Please, it is, it does no one any good to call anyone na, sir, sir! Sir!
Chris, calm down.
Sir! It doesn't help your children to see this, it doesn't help the argument.
It doesn't.
All right, ma'am, I'm going to have to ask you to leave the room.
She knows she has parents, and we're going to sit there and have them treated like children.
Ma'am.
This country, our liberty is free, and your party gives to be slaves over a mask.
You have had your opportunity to speak. We have the next person, please. This has to be a civil, a civil forum.
We don't have to answer.
We don't.
Four, not one.
Wait! If you want to speak, you can get up and speak and give us your name and number, right now.
We all have to face the question.
Answer the question, stop going around.
We don't have, we are not.
We all have to. You've never seen this.
Okay.
We're in here full. It's never just.
I think.
We all want to answer with all the same.
We will have, we will have to stop and clear the room if we don't have order, and no one else will be able to speak.
Please answer the question.
We don't, the answers to the questions are in the rules, and that's what we're going to follow. We are, I am not a doctor, madam, I cannot answer the question. Okay.
There is Bill Gates, but for some reason, everybody is listening to Bill Gates.
What? We'll just stop the meeting. We will stop the meeting, and nothing will get done, and the teachers that are supposed to be hired, because we have to have a business meeting, we have, and I do want to give you all a chance to speak. So if, if we don't have the, ma'am.
We're wasting our breath, we just want to talk.
Ma'am, you will have an opportunity in a minute. Would you like to speak, the lady at the podium? Please give us your name and number.
My name is Charlotte Rodriguez, I live at 8 Mayberry Avenue.
Ms. Rodriguez, please stop until you have the floor. Okay.
Ms. Armenio, you tried to hand this to me when I walked in, I think it was Governor Murphy's order.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, executive order. So this is the Acting Commissioner of Education's response. Throughout the pandemic, our goal has always been the safe return to in-person learning, where children thrive academically and socially. How can children thrive socially when they can't see the expressions on other children's faces? How can they thrive academically when all they're doing is thinking about how uncomfortable they are, and they're in brain fog because they're breathing back in their own air? Are, by a show of hands, and I want to see a show of hands, because I want you to all to be individuals, who supports this executive order? Who supports masking our children? No, I want to know, I want you to be individuals.
We are, we are.
I want a show of hands.
You, you cannot get a show of hands, we are a board of the whole here, and we all make decisions.
So none of you are fighting for our children?
Yes.
Every day.
Okay, every day. We are sitting here doing.
Really? Really? Because, hold on. My son has been in marching band since the eighth grade. His whole senior year last year was taken away from him, okay? He got one performance, which I saw you out there marching around. It was an outdoor performance that my husband and I set up our chairs, and we sat down with no mask, we're outside. Within seconds, the Monroe Township little police, whatever, the security here, came over to us and made us put a mask on. The band had holes in their mask. Why can't you see how ridiculous this is? Why? I just don't understand it. You, you say that you're fighting for our children? You wouldn't let us in the door without a mask on. This is a 99% survivable virus, and you guys are hiding from it, and you're teaching our children to be afraid. We are supposed to comfort them, and we're teaching them to be scared of everything, and it's disgusting, and every single one of you should be ashamed of yourselves if you support this.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Cindy Farrara, 19, Tall Oaks Drive, Monroe. Good evening. I come here tonight on behalf of my children, ages seven, six, two, and other children of all ages. I feel as a mom and a citizen, it is my duty and obligation to be the voice for the children. People say children are resilient. I ask, are they really, or are they being muzzled? And brainwash would fear through surrounding people with masks and media. Our children from day one have been on our government's agenda. They instill fear right where they know they could hurt us. I was one of them that was fearing for my child's life. First came school shutdowns, then businesses, leading to two-week quarantine, mask mandates, to vaccines, all to flatten the curve. Ladies and gentlemen, we are in 18 months now, and back to square one, right before school has to open with mask mandates once again, and for some, due to age requirement, COVID vaccines, which will be in effect for children ages five to 11 by January 2021. And booster shots, according to President Biden today. It amuses me to see how everything has lined up perfectly for our government. Now, I love this country because of how I can honestly and freely speak, especially making a suitable decision for myself and my family. What I don't love is the government trying to take my constitutional rights away. They forgot, and many of you may have too, that they work for us, the people. No matter what side you're on, you deserve to have a choice. Not having a politician call the shots who doesn't even know you or your child's name. We as parents can agree, hopefully, we want to make the best decision for our children, and we are the only ones that can make that decision. As for my family, a mask is not a good option. I don't need to research to see how the masks are affecting children. Unfortunately, I experienced many incidents of the mask mandates and every other mandate that, that has been given to me since March that I have followed. I stand today to say enough is enough. One size does not fit all in any category of life, especially in the critical, in this critical time. In life, everything we do have consequences. How far are we, the community, the parents, friends, willing to go for the government? I'm not willing to put my child's life at risk anymore to follow something that has no scientific proof. What I do know for sure is, I mask my children, and I will be setting them up for disaster I'm not willing to put my child's life at risk anymore to follow something that has no scientific proof. What I do know for sure is, I mask my children and I will be setting them up for disaster when they come in contact with someone with the flu, or even COVID, because we all know that flu has higher percentage of death. I refuse to weaken their immune system any longer. This is my choice, and for those who disagree, you're entitled to make your own decision. That's all I ask for, is the freedom of choice. Give us a choice.
Hi, Jeremy Marcus, twenty-seven McFadden. So, welcome to Day Five Hundred to slow the spread and not overwhelm hospitals. I think the goalposts have been moved a lot, it's tough to keep up. So, we know this is not about a virus, and you may not want to admit it, but something stinks, and it has for a long time. I don't think any of you wanted this fight, but here we are. So, question for you guys on the board, what is the line that needs to be crossed from Trenton, for you to fight back in Trenton? Is it the masks? Is it gonna be the removal of religious liberty exemption for vaccines? Because that's coming. Okay? They tried it in late nineteen, early twenty-twenty, it failed by a vote or two, it's not gonna fail this time. They're gonna push it through. Okay? So I'm frightened for my kids, and if you're not afraid for the kids, you're not paying attention. The government keeping us safe is a much bigger threat than the virus to most people. We've still taken our shoes off at the airport, it's been twenty years. When do you think this mask nonsense ends? We cannot comply our way out of this. Okay? You can't comply our way out of tyranny. Everything we're doing is security theater. So it asks the kids, ask the kids, you can stop one or two kids from taking their masks off, you can't stop four hundred. So, non-compliance is the only way out. I can, I can stand up here for the remainder of the time and tell you that masks on kids, masks on kids who are of no risk to COVID do much more harm than good. They are, as we know, disgusting Petri dishes of bacteria. Actual science shows that kids have a greater risk of getting struck by lightning than dying of COVID. The kids are not resilient, they are not. They are obedient, and they don't want to stand out. We have millions of adults in this country who are in therapy weekly due to childhood drama. We are brainwashing the kids to believe that air is dirty and humans are toxic. And how do you think this turns out? Suppressing the natural development of a child's immune system is criminal and abusive. Absent hard medical data and multiple RCT studies with statistical differences, they don't exist. Masks are no masks. It's nothing more than political theater, being used to limit liability in a courtroom and keep whatever funding we get from Trenton. Suicides are up, depression, anxiety, substance abuse, all up in kids, especially teens. Okay? Adults have taken away sixteen months from them. Just when things were getting back to normal, kids have had a very normal summer, they do it again. It's crushing. They are of no risk. The kids need normal, and they need to know that you are in their corner fighting for them. And if you truly represent the kids in what's best for them, not only the education, mental and spiritual well-being, you will push back on the governor in this ridiculous, unscientific mandate. How many parents have pulled their kids or not enrolled because of the mask mandate, and because of Zoom prison? Okay? I know of three, and I don't know anybody. How many parents will pull their kids over a vaccine mandate? Thousands, thousands. So we either have home rule, which is a rule in New Jersey, that's why we have seven hundred school districts, or we don't. So, the restart committee did their homework, they made masks optional, and it was the correct choice. You have to fight for it. You do not work for Murphy, you don't work for the NJEA, you work for the kids. Okay? Thank you very much, have a good night.
Hi, I'm, here, Merrill? Yeah. I'm here to fight for the mask.
But you give us your name and address.
Oh, my name? That's right, I'm sorry. My name's Cameron, two-two-one Fernette Avenue. I am going into my senior year here, and I am voting for masks, because, I am.
He has the floor, please.
And, those are the, the reasons that I'm doing this is because, last year.
You know, free speech, excuse me, free speech is important to everyone, whether we disagree or agree. Please, let us be really democratic and hear everyone out. Thank you. Please, continue. Go ahead, sir.
And, uh, let's not forget, last year, we did have the outbreak in our school when we first brought people back in. Second, the Delta variant has been more deadly than any other variant of this virus.
Go ahead.
And, thirdly, with how last year went, I had a very tough time with the online learning, and I would like a in-person education, whether I have to wear a mask or not, I don't care, it's not a big deal to me.
Please.
And.
If someone laughed at your child, you'd be very upset, so let's be courteous, please. Go ahead.
Because, I have, I myself have, my family has been affected by COVID. We have been affected by many terrible things this year from the outcome of this virus. And I would like that to stop, and the closest we're gonna get to that is by simply just wearing a mask.
Thank you very much.
Tom Motard, six-six-eight Spotswood English Town Road, Monroe. Fortunately for you guys, these guys covered pretty much everything I had to say. But let me put it like this, you know, before we got the chance to have the floor, you guys were talking a lot of business that some may or may not have normally cared about. You see, to us, none of that matters anymore. You could go raise our taxes, you could buy this, buy that, we don't care. It's our kids that matter, that's the only thing that matters, that's why we're here. Normally, like I said, we would pay attention to all this. It's kind of what's going on in the country right now. Nobody's giving a shit, their businesses are failing, nobody, because our families are being hijacked, you know, just, American family values are being thrown out the window, it's all under tyrannical dictator nonsense. As for the last gentleman that spoke, that's his right. He can wear ten masks for all I care. He can wear them every day of the week, he can wear it in the shower, I don't care. It's his choice. All we want is our choice. Like I told you in the hallway, when, when, you know, not that I know by experience, but from seeing on the news and whatnot, when people abduct children, they put the hand over the child's mouth. That's done to silence them, right? For starters. So let's start with not acting like abductors, and start caring about our children again. This is, there's nothing, there's nothing here that is based on science. You want me to tear into Fauci, I'll tell you the truth about him. I'll tell you the truth about how another doctor that knew he was full of shit during the AIDS crisis spoke badly of him, guess when he died? January nineteen. You know, this is all, if anybody really believes in this virus to be more than, or much more than influenza at this point, you, you're totally off, and you could go get ten vaccines, you could get a booster every other six months, I don't care. Make Pharma richer and richer while they crush us, and guess what? You're not gonna need these schools anymore. Because you, no matter what you think you're doing out here, when they empty these schools, because everybody unenrolls their child, or whatever the perfect word for that is, I'm not a, you know, a scholar, but when these schools are empty, guess what they're gonna be full of? When they have our police turn on us and take us out of our homes because we can't pay our bills because we ain't got no jobs no more, because they don't need us, get it through your head. These people are demonic, we're following this globe, globalist shit right off a cliff right now, and it starts with your local community. You are the start of this for us. You are the closest thing we have to hope that there is. And you might agree with me, you might disagree with me, and that's fine, because I believe in freedom of speech, which is already taken away on the internet. If you don't recognize that, then you're probably not in agreement with me, because you're allowed to talk still. Point being, I don't know, maybe, maybe I need the mayor to be sitting in your chair, you don't deserve this, maybe I need horse-tooth Murphy right here, right now. I want some facts, before I'm gonna muzzle my child and put duct tape over his mouth and make him breathe in his own carbon dioxide until he's, until he's fainting because he's lightheaded. I mean, this is stupid. Dirty Petri dish, it's disgusting. Stop, just take them off now. Take them off now, cut the crap already. This is crap. It was, it was okay when it was two weeks, we were all scared, there was something new. We came together, we did what Americans do. All right? We all were in fear, we wanted to do the best for our kids, but a lot of us, instead of just watching CNN, actually take our own path and do our own research, with factual places to look, not the TV. Okay? And what we found is this whole thing has been bullshit. And we could get into how it stole the election, and maybe that's why we have ten or forty thousand troops abandoned right now in Afghanistan. Is CNN gonna put case numbers up for the rapes and the murders that are gonna take place there, like they did to fear us into this bullshit? Wake up, everybody, please.
Well, hard, it's hard to follow up.
First, name and address, please.
Yeah, good evening, Nick Dranscheck, thirty-four Lindwood Drive. Just wanted to take a moment to express my opinions regarding masks and our children. I have two children in the district right now, and my wish is for them to attend class without a mask. I want them to clearly hear their teachers, I want them to be able to express their thoughts and their questions and their expressions, I want them to be seen. The benefits of masks in prevent, in preventing serious illness or death from COVID-nineteen among children, as we all probably know, are infinitely small. At the same time, they are disruptive to learning and communicating in the classrooms. COVID-nineteen is, is, is less of a threat to children than accidents or the common flu. The survival rate, thank you, the survival rate among American children with confirmed cases is approximately ninety-nine point nine-nine percent. Did you know that school-aged children in New Jersey from January twenty-twenty till March of twenty-twenty-one, they're twenty-seven times more likely to die from unexpected injuries than COVID? At the same time, the long-term harm to kids from masking is potentially enormous. Masking is a psychological stressor for kids, as we've all learned already here from other parents. It's also very disruptive to learning. Covering the lower half of the face of both the teacher and pupil reduces the ability to communicate. In particular, children lose the experience of mimicking expressions, an essential tool for nonbehavioral communication. Negative emotions can be amplified. Bonding between teacher and students takes a hit. Overall, it's likely that masking exasperates the chances that a child will experience anxiety and depression, which are already at pandemic levels themselves. Did you know that suicide rates for teenagers, teenage girls in particular, have increased fifty percent over the past year? That concerns me, because I have two daughters. I truly see both sides of this whole dilemma, and I can't imagine the emotional and psychological tool, the motions that the last two years have put on all of our children. They had to quickly adopt to their entire lives. It was hard enough for me to wrap my adult brain around and to comprehend, but, you know, it was, it was much harder for our children. And, you know, look, I thank you for all you've done over the nearly two years, but I feel it's really time for these children to be on masks. I believe it's a personal, family decision, like the senior spoke about, just, you know, a few, a few people before, if he wants to wear a mask, that's his choice. All I'm asking is that you allow parents to make that decision that best fits each family. Other school boards in New Jersey and in other states have rescinded the mask mandate, or let it be the student's choice, and that's all I'm asking here. Thank you.
My name is Kylie Moy, and my address is seven Quakerich Court. I actually wasn't planning on speaking here today, but after witnessing the utter disrespect, after one of my fellow seniors decided to speak, I felt the need to speak. I am a senior in high school, as I said before, and the only thing that I should be worrying about this year is applying to college. However, I am here worried that when I go to school, people won't be wearing masks, and that would affect me, my family, and my loved ones. So, all I'm asking is that people be respectful, we are here, we are a community, and I'm embarrassed that someone, that my fellow senior came up here, and he was utterly disrespected. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cade Williams, I live three-fifty-nine Bucklou Avenue. I am an intern here, and I do the school, and I was supposed to be filming the Board of Ed meeting today. I was not planning on speaking today, but after all the utter disrespect I've seen from grown adults, I've decided that it is my turn to voice my opinion for masks. And, in twenty-seventeen, I was diagnosed with generalized anxiety disorder, social anxiety, and panic disorder. So, to hear people spit out statistics that don't even make sense to how they correlate with masks, it's, it's overwhelming, because I genuinely have to deal with this every single day. I have to deal with anxiety every single day, and what really gives me anxiety is when people just don't know what's best for them, when people don't follow through with what is going to keep them safe and what is going to keep us all safe. It's, it's overwhelming, and to see this from grown adults. I'm a senior here, I, I'm technically still a child, and to think that I know how to act more respectful than these adults here, it's ridiculous.
Thank you for your time.
Hi, Kate Ratner, two Kings Court. So, first thing I just want to say is, I think it's really important for everyone just to realize that, you know, there, there's no right answer here, you know, just like parenting, no one's been given a rulebook, you know, and we have a community where there are people who feel like we should be wearing masks twenty-four-seven, and there are people who would prefer that we just burn the masks, and they each have their own reasons. But, while I certainly think all voices should be heard, we need to be respectful of each other, and we need to be respectful of the people who are sitting here and volunteering their time. Anyhow, based on what I read in the Return to In-Person Instruction Plan, I just had a few questions. So the first was, I was just curious as to how lunches are going to be enacted. I see that lunches are going to be provided, but I didn't find where students are going to be eating, you know, and I might have missed this, but if they are eating in the cafeteria, you know, what resources are going to be used to distance from each other per the guidelines? And, if they're not, then are we going to run into the same issues that we had last year, where there was a shortage of people that might be able to watch students in the classrooms during lunchtime? I'm also curious if students require water in their classroom, are they gonna be able to take their mask off in order to drink that water? My next concern is regarding the student and staff member travel plan. In the plan, it states that unvaccinated individuals who travel should get tested three to five days upon returning, and then stay home and self-quarantine for seven days. However, what it says is that it should happen, and not that it's mandated. I know that I was personally caught off guard last year when our family traveled to North Carolina for a family function, and my daughter was then required to quarantine the last week of school. I had assumed, since the New Jersey Travel Advisory had been lifted in May, we'd no longer be mandated to follow this policy, but per the school nurse, she was unable to attend school for a week. So clarification on that would be quite helpful. And then, my final concern is just regarding virtual instruction for quarantined students. It does state if a full class is required to quarantine, then students will be moving over to remote instruction with their teacher providing virtual instruction. My concern is if there are several students, but not the entire class, who need to quarantine at the same time, by only providing home instruction, it will create a very challenging environment for both teachers and students. If the student who is home cannot view their normal class, then you will have students that are out from anywhere for a few days to a few weeks, only receiving two hours of instruction each day. In addition, this instruction may be from a teacher who may not be their own teacher, and therefore may not necessarily teach that grade level, plus you can't guarantee that the same curriculum and methods being provided by the home instructor will be the same as their normal classroom teacher. Once this student re-enters the class, they will be in a different spot in the curriculum than the rest of their classmates, which will make it very hard to manage a classroom, as the material will have to be re-taught, but there will be a majority of students who have already learned this material, and will be bored by having to listen to it over and over again. I am aware that there is a certain amount of differentiated instruction required in classrooms, but I think having this happen consistently is setting teachers and students up to fail. I know this is a difficult time for everyone, and I know we are doing the best we can, but I ask that we can possibly revisit this approach for the sake of both the teachers and the students. Thank you.
Sorry, can't breathe. Hi, my name's Barbara Lee, forty-three Nelson Avenue, Monroe Township, New Jersey. I'm a mother, I'm a parent, I'm an employee of the Board of Ed. I want to thank you guys, you did a marvelous job last year, going into what, we had no clue what was going on. This is a new year. I watched these kids struggle in school, my heart broke. I really, honestly believe that each family should make a decision for their child, and each employee should have their right to whether they want to wear a mask or not. You guys provided us with vaccines if we needed it, or wanted it. At this point, we need to stand for the children, because I watched them, my own son would come home with blisters on his face from wearing these masks. Rashes, blisters, it's not healthy. I can understand, there are certain parents that are so upset and so worried about this virus, if they want to mask their children, let them mask their children, but at least leave it up to the individual. We have to get back to some sort of normalcy and some sort of control over our own lives. I'm gonna read you from the mask that my son just wore on the plane. This mask is, isn't a respirator, it's a product intended for general-purpose usage. When properly worn, reduces potential, potential, sorry, my mouth is dry, potential contact by the wearer to fluids, particles, but does not eliminate the risk of contracting any disease or infection. Change mask immediately if soiled or splashed with blood or bodily fluids. These kids are gonna wear it for six six and a half hours a day. It's not healthy, and it should be up to the parents, and it should be up to us as workers, whether we have this on our face. I know last year, by the end of the year, sitting in the school in the heat, I felt like I was going to fall on the floor and pass out. It's not healthy. It should be up to the individual. And again, I thank you, because I know you guys worked hard to try to protect our students and do the best you can with what we had. Thank you.
Hi, Deborah Palella, 15 Louise Lane. Definitely a different kind of board meeting than usual. I've been coming for at least 11 years, and it's the way you normally run it, open forum, four minutes each, so I'm glad that you're looking to increase that time as well, so thank you for that. I have a few questions following up on Kate Ratner, as well as I read the plan that is on the agenda. So, assuming we have to follow the orders and that stays, and the kids do have to mask, I'd like to know if there's, A, any time will they'll be allowed to leave the school to get some fresh air, if there'll be designated spots for them to go to. If there will be an area, if they say I need to, they can go out and do it, and it will be monitored. Secondly, in looking at my own children that are in high school, this year at the junior prom, there was a tent set up behind the school. I'm not sure if you're exactly aware of where it was. That tent held hundreds of students, and I'm wondering if we could add that to some sort of budget to add it on for having outdoor lunches for those possible, to get more children to go outside and to be able to take their masks off and be able to breathe. I don't want to hear from my kids that they're having trouble, but they don't have a stated doctor's note that they need to take off their mask, but they are getting anxious, or something happens, and they want to go get a breath of fresh air. I want to know they're permitted to do so, and I'd like to know if there's any plans in place for that also to happen at each school. Again, mine are in high school, so the thing about the tent came up, and I thought, hey, why not? I've seen other schools doing it, putting outdoor seating, and maybe you can't let all 2,200 kids sit outside every day. Put them on a rotation. At least give them something to look forward to, because these kids have lost so much. To go back with what Kate Ratner said, I am curious if there is some discussion about how lunch will work, if there is a discussion regarding the travel. If we do leave the state, if I drive down to North Carolina to see my brother and I come back, are my kids going to be at home, they're waiting for their instruction after school, and they just miss class, even if they take a test, or they were just in my car, in my house, and in my car, and home again? It just seems like it doesn't make sense at all for that to happen to the kids. So, I would like to know if you have any answers for those questions.
Dr. Alvik will be going through the whole plan, so I think all of the questions might be answered.
Including details of lunches in the different specific schools, and the travel as well, and the quarantine. And what about my idea about, has there been any thought given to about outdoor, or is that also going to be mentioned?
Students will go outside for recess, not for lunches. They'll have lunches in the schools.
There's no recess in high school.
Right, but we did add an additional lunch period at the high school so that we can spread students out more.
Okay, how about we invent a recess for high school?
I wish we could.
I mean, I know schedules are tricky, and I'm not joking, there, as you know, there are people who are quite passionate about this. There needs to be some sort of non-penalized state for these kids to go outside and be able to get a, without being asked, where are they going or what are they doing. So, I'd really like it to be considered. I'd like there to be maybe a big tent outside, something for these kids. I get that we're in New Jersey and it snows, but please consider letting these kids also have, and administration, have a sort of breather outside. Thank you.
Here we are with this one. So, Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. You know, I sit here and listen to both sides, you know, of should we wear a mask, should we not wear a mask? Everybody has their rights. I know for me and my wife, it's very difficult for one of our sons. He has an IEP, he has a speech disorder. You can barely hear him without a mask. Putting a mask on makes it that much more difficult. But I also understand some of this comes from our governor, our great governor, and you guys are also mandated to comply, and I know that there are consequences if we don't comply, and some of that is funding. And we fight daily about not getting enough funding, and I can just imagine, and again, I'm not saying one way or another, because I respect everybody's view here, but I know that there are consequences. But what I would ask this board, because you are elected to represent everyone, is that you at least owe it to everybody in the community to put a letter to the governor expressing what the, both sides of the coin are for our district, because these parents should be heard. So, I don't think it's a lot for you guys to put a letter together representing what the community has said, and if it falls back on the governor that nothing is going to happen, then perhaps we go to the next steps. You know, I said to my wife on the way over, you know, I was going to get a similar response, as you just said, Michelle, about the reopening plan, and while I appreciate Dr. Alvik going into it, the reopening plan has so many holes, I don't think our questions are going to get answered in her going through the plan. So, I'll try to get through as many questions as I have here, and then I guess I'll have to go to second forum. But first question is, there's a part here that says if there's an IEP or something that precludes the kid from, a child from wearing a mask, that they wouldn't have to wear it. So, what are the details on that? If they have a speech disorder, what does that mean? That's first. Second, how do you prevent transmission if you're going to allow students to take off masks for lunch? Are the kids going to be sitting six feet apart? We know that in 24 hours, three five-minute segments puts the kids just as much risk if they're not wearing a mask at all. So, I didn't see anything in here talking about not eating, you know, if they're eating lunch, then doesn't that defeat the whole purpose of these masks? So, that's one question I had. When it comes to the cleaning solutions, I thought we had a big thing about the, we're getting these marvelous filters, and we didn't need anything more. This whole report goes into, we need to leave windows open now. We're going to give parents a choice to bring 570 different products on the N-list, different chemicals. You know, we were fighting, how many meetings about mixing salt and water, and now in our plan, we say, parents can pick any product from the N-list to send in with their students. And now we have kids wearing masks, breathing in fumes. I mean, I don't understand this plan. I really don't. So, I would like to learn a little bit more there. I would like to know about, you know, what we do for kids that do have asthma and other breathing disorders that can't wear masks. What are the parents' instructions of what they need to do, because this plan really doesn't outline that. When you get into the symptoms, you know, it talks about congestion, runny nose, cough. I don't know any parent sitting here that during, you know, the cold season or allergy season, that their kids don't get those three things, and that's the protocol to, you know, to make kids quarantine. And then we get into the whole, they're only going to get two hours of instruction at home. So, I'd like a little bit more clarification on, how do we get past, well, if it's not allergies, it's not cold, just because a kid has a runny nose, they have to go through COVID testing, seems a bit over the top. In the Student Staff Member Travel, it talks about, and this report is a little bit, let me just finish this last piece. This report, you know, includes things that the district wants to do, and then it goes to recommendations. So, it's back and forth. I can't really figure out what you want to do and what you don't want to adopt. But it says in the Staff Member and Student Travel, it's a recommendation by the CDC, but it doesn't say that it's actually going to be implemented. So, we need more clarification on what domestic travel means, people traveling. I can go on and on, but I'll be honest with you, I think the reopening report was pretty poor in general.
Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Sarah Aziz, 3 Launcelot Drive. I'm disappointed that the issue of the demographic study was not discussed at the last BGT meeting. Overcrowding problem is a very serious problem, and we cannot know the extent of it without an updated demographer's report. The last demographic report was based on October 2019 numbers, and for a referendum that is due, hopefully to come out in September 2022, we can't rely on 2019 numbers. The new demographic, demographer should have been hired already so that they could begin their legwork in August and September, and right now, as far as I know, they've not been hired. And the overcrowding problem that we already had, it will be exacerbated by the pandemic, because we will still have more overcrowded schools, but we'll have to institute social distancing requirements, and I'm concerned about lack of classroom space, and how that will impact our course offerings. And so, I want to know why there has not been a demographer that's been hired, and not only will the construction costs rise every month, but the interest rates are also projected to rise. So, the delay in moving this referendum forward will cost taxpayers millions of dollars, and I'm concerned about the impact it will have on our taxes and the safety of our students. So, I would like to know what the district is doing to expedite this process. Thank you very much.
Hi, guys. Katie Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. So, I think we can all agree that we want to do what's right and best for our children. I think I can say that everyone here wants to see our children succeed. What I've read in our reopening plan, however, is demonstrating to me that our children's best interests, sorry, is it okay if I pull this down? Just talk. Are not being kept in mind, particularly when it comes to learning while in quarantine. As an educator, I will be the first one to say that last year was the most challenging year of my career, and I honestly never wanted to live another year like it again, and it feels like that is going to happen, at least for the time being. But despite that, I had to push through because I knew I had to do what was best for my students, whatever that was. I had to do what was best for them to make sure that they were successful. So, what I want to know is why we feel that two hours of virtual home instruction would be better than having a student participate remotely with their class. Granted, now a child sitting in front of a screen for two hours is better than six, and I know we try to limit screen time as much as possible. However, maintaining the continuity of instruction should outweigh the time that they're on the screen, even if they're just able to listen, not necessarily participating, and try to maybe ease the burden of the classroom teacher a little bit, just to have somebody online listening to them. I think it would be better than having them work with someone who they don't know, potentially, and who may not be familiar with the content that they need to be taught. In addition, it's also an added expense. We have to pay for home instruction. The district has to pay for home instruction. So, if we have 100 kids out, let's say, at one point, we have to pay each of those home instructors for their, whatever the hourly rate is, for whatever content that they're teaching. So, that being said, I just have a couple more questions. When will home instruction begin? Is it at the first sign that they have a symptom and they get sent home? Is it once they're, they have a positive test and they have to quarantine? Is it after they're out for longer than 10 days? While I think 100% the teachers should be making more money, and that, you know, getting extra money for home instruction is exactly what they, what every teacher earns, are we making fiscally responsible decisions here for our district? I'm hoping that this portion of the plan will be reconsidered. It's not cost-effective, but the biggest problem is it's not what's best for our children. Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't spoken?
Hi, Monica Pollak, 30 Davidson Ave, Jamesburg. Hi, neighbor. I wasn't planning on speaking either, and I don't like to disrespect the cursing. I'm not going to do that. Both sides to hear is great. I don't have a job where I could work on the computer. I don't have a job. My husband works very hard. My husband got laid off. I was driving a FedEx truck. I'm sure you've seen it. I pulled my kids out of Jamesburg School System because they follow Monroe, I understand that, and I put my kids in Catholic school. I was raised a Jewish girl. Again, you moved from New York? My kids went to a Catholic school. He was seven, my daughter was in preschool. My son didn't talk to anybody that year. He made maybe one friend. No one, no one came up to me. No one knew me. I'm not in the church. As I delivered packages, I went into contracting offices, guys making $160,000 a year. No one had masks on. I'm sweating, carrying boxes, 80 pounds, and they want me to put a mask on to deliver your new flat-screen TV? I went into urgent care, cardiac Monroe on Applegarth Road, the cardiology department, and the manager did not have her mask on. And she turns around and said, oh, I got to grab my mask. And I said, what's the point? You don't have it on now. And the point is, our kids, they're putting their masks on because they're being conditioned to. A six, a five, a four, a three-year-old are not going to say no to their teacher. My kids disrespect me at home, and I say, you could be bad at home, but don't you dare disrespect a teacher. And I know it's hard, and sometimes you're scared, because if the government tells you something, you want to believe in it, they're supposed to protect us, but they're not. You have to look at this. If you're strong and you believe in your beliefs, I'm a massage therapist. Dentists were shut down, psychologists, doctors, massage therapy, chiropractic, but what stayed open? McDonald's? Burger King? The nail salons? Liquor stores? To let the alcoholics be still alive? Please, let it be a choice. I've had to use the religious thing, and I do belong to a group, because my kids haven't had the flu shot. And I get questions, I've lost friends because of it, that my kids don't have the flu shot. My kids will never get this shot.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we will close the public portion. Do I have everyone approve? Yes. Yes? Anyone opposed or change? Okay, public portion is closed at this time. We will move on to the Assistant Superintendent's Report. Dr. Lehman, please let us know what's going on.
Thank you. Yep, just a quick update. I wanted to thank Mr. Maralta and all of the employees that worked this summer in making our credit recovery, our book club, Beach Bash, Summer of STEM, Music Academy, Monroe Rec Integration Programs, our ESY Programs a success. They did an outstanding job. The students had, from what I'm hearing, the feedback we were getting, very, very pleasant experiences, getting back in the buildings, getting some socialization opportunities. We're wrapping things up this week and next week with our Summer Enrichment Academies, and then we will have a full after-action report with enrollments, some thoughts about what we could do to expand the program next summer, this fall. So, that's it.
Okay, we are going to give the floor to Dr. Alvik, and she will make her first presentation will be Plan for Safe Return and In-Person Instruction, as we all hope.
So, the District Restart Committee Meetings, Committees have met twice over the summer. I've also met with administration, and the plan follows the outline that we're required to do for the state of New Jersey. So, there are more details that the district will be doing than what's in the plan, but this is what's required to be submitted to the state. So, we'll start with going through the Maintaining Health and Safety. The first section is the Universal and Correct Wearing of Masks. I know that this has been a discussion this evening, but pursuant to Executive Order 251, that was signed on August 6th, to be enacted on August 9th. Students and employees shall wear masks indoors, including buses, at all times, except when doing so would inhibit the individual's health, and I know that question came up. If there is a question about your child not wearing masks due to health, that you should contact the school nurse, and they will go through the process individually with each request. If there, a student is exposed to extreme heat indoors, so this goes back to what we were doing in the spring, if it's too warm in a classroom, all of our buildings are air-conditioned, there are some areas in the schools where it may not be, so they do not have to wear it if there's extreme heat. If an individual has trouble breathing, is unconscious, incapacitated, or otherwise unable to remove a face mask without assistance. When a student's IEP or 504 plan precludes the use of a face mask, so I know this question just came up also, again, this is something that would be discussed individually with the parent through the case manager. So, if you have a question about that because of an IEP or a 504, contact your case manager. Or when a student is participating in high-intensity physical activity, such as during a physical education class in a well-ventilated location and able to maintain a six-foot physical distancing. Our PE classes will be going outside, weather permitting. If not, they will be separated within the gyms and the areas. If not, they will be separated within the gyms and the areas. All visitors, including contractors, shall wear masks at all times. Not required while eating or drinking or playing a musical instrument, and they're not required of any individual while outdoors. So one of the questions was about the breaks. I will bring that back to some of the administrators, specifically the middle school and high school that do not have recess. The elementary schools will all have recess, so the students will go outside, obviously weather permitting. The nurses will continue to communicate out acceptable face coverings and the proper wearing of face coverings. Physical distancing. So the requirement now per the DOH and the DOH Department of Health and the New Jersey Department of Education guidelines requires social distancing to the best of our ability. When we are bringing back 7,000 students into our schools, we will not be able to maintain six-foot distancing within our classrooms. So we will do it to the best of our ability. It actually says three feet now to the best of our ability, so we will do that. If needed, we do have some dividers, but again, the dividers are just another mitigation, mitigation strategy. They are not to be in place of anything. Other procedures include arranging the desks in rows so that students are not facing each other in the classroom, avoiding grouping desks, maintaining cohorts. That's going to be our biggest piece right now because we are going, if a student, if a student tests positive or has symptoms, we are going to have to manage the contact tracing and make sure that we know who is within the six feet for more than 15 minutes because that will be considered a close contact. There will be no locker room use for PE classes, so students will be expected to come to school in, dressed for their PE classes. However, we will be using locker rooms for sports. And that is because, but we have created a schedule that students will rotate in through to get changed for sports. Since we have full days of school, we want to make sure that students don't have to go home and then come back for sports. They can just stay through, but we'll work, we worked on a schedule so that students will rotate through the locker rooms. Masks will have to be worn in the locker rooms as students are changing. Again, if it's with an IEP, we will work with any student that has an IEP. We work on that as an individual, case-by-case basis. The third section is hand washing and respiratory etiquette. This, again, just goes back to, we will maintain hand sanitizing stations with at least 60% alcohol-based hand sanitizers or other approved sanitizers when and where appropriate, maintaining that and also reminding everyone about washing hands, sneezing into your elbow or a tissue, throwing it away, and continuing the education about proper hand washing. Cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, including improving ventilation. This has not changed since last year. This is the same procedure that we followed, except we are not going to have students disinfecting the desks after every class. The rooms will be disinfected daily, but we will have our windows, we have said that our windows or our vents within our classrooms are opened up enough so that there is a fresh air component. So we do have the Merv 13 filters in all of our buildings, but there's also requirement to have a fresh air component and we open the dampers, thank you, in all of our systems or we can open the windows in the classroom to help have the fresh air in. And again, that's nothing, that's nothing different from last year. Bus cleaning in classrooms will be cleaned and disinfected daily. If a parent chooses to send in wipes for their students to use on their desks, they can do that, but the wipes must be on the EPA list. Again, this is something that we allowed last year. This is not new, but it's not required. Parents don't have to send in it. The next section is the contact tracing. So all of the schools will have an isolation space. So if there's any symptomatic students or staff members, they will be moved to isolation with supervision. All schools will follow the DOH guidance for illness, so this is what we have to continually follow for contact tracing, quarantining, and readmittance. So we did put in the plan what is currently, current according to the DOH, the Department of Health. So there is an isolation room. We keep the symptomatic person masked unless it's medically contraindicated and we monitor for symptoms. There is exclusion criteria. This is specific to the CDC. If you have at least two of the following symptoms, fever, chills, muscle aches, headaches, sore throat, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, fatigue, congestion, or runny nose, or at least one of the following symptoms, cough, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, new olfactory disorder, or a new taste disorder, then yes, you will be excluded from school. However, the nurses will review any symptoms and check for documented prior medical illness. Again, this is not different. This is what we've been following and this is what is recommended from the CDC and the Department of Health. When illness occurs in the school setting, again, we will provide the student or staff member with a mask unless contraindicated. Individuals should be sent home and referred to their healthcare provider. Individuals with COVID-19 compatible symptoms should be tested. If they choose not to test, they would have to remain out for the full quarantine period. If they test, then they, there is a protocol that they would follow in order to be able to return to school if they test negative. We would identify close contacts. Close contacts are identified as anyone sitting within six feet, regardless of whether you're wearing a mask, within six feet for 15 minutes, and it could be a accumulation of the 15 minutes. Following notification, we would follow all notification protocols from the DOH. We report it to the Department of Health. We report it to the county. We also report it to the community, so the community is aware when there is a positive case. And, yep, that's the communication. So that's the, and then we go to the exclusion. So you have, yes, you are excluded if you have it. Fully vaccinated, close contacts with no symptoms, do not have to quarantine, but it's recommended that they test three to five days after exposure and wear a mask in public settings until they receive a negative test result, but they're not required to do that. Anyone who is excluded, individuals who are close contacts, can be considered for a reduced exclusion period based on the transmission level. So if we're in the yellow or green levels, and right now we are in the yellow level according to the Cali level for the state, the exposed close contacts may be excluded for 10 days. However, if they get a negative test result between five and seven days, they can return after seven days. So again, we're following the CDC and the Department of Health requirements. The next section is Diagnostic and Screening Testing. We are going to continue to promote behaviors that reduce the spread of COVID, such as encouraging staff and students to stay home when they are not feeling well, encouraging the practice of hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, and having signage and messages around the school building. We will continue to send out the daily reminder email of what those symptoms are so that they can just be reviewed by parents and staff. And we ask if you answer yes to any of those questions to contact the school and not send your child or the staff person not to come to school. And students will sanitize their hands when entering the classroom. The next section is vaccinations. We have provided to staff information about opportunities for vaccinations that were organized in the district, and we will continue to communicate vaccination opportunities to all eligible persons. The next section is Appropriate Accommodations for Children with Disabilities. Again, this is individualized, so if you have a question about your child based on their IEP or their 504, you should contact your case manager. Student and staff member travel. Again, we follow the Department of Health and the CDC guidance for travel, and that's exactly what you have here directly from the state website, excuse me, from the CDC website. According to the CDC, unvaccinated individuals who travel should get tested one to three days before their trip, three to five days after travel, and stay home and self-quarantine for seven days after domestic travel. And domestic travel is defined as lasting longer, 24 hours or longer in states, to states or U.S. territories other than those connected to New Jersey. International travel is requiring that all air passengers arriving in the United States from a foreign country to get tested for COVID-19 no more than three days before their flight departs and to present the negative test or documentation of having recovered from COVID-19 to the airline before boarding the flight. Again, we will continue to follow and update that as anything changes through the CDC and which then, if the CDC makes updated, then the district can change it once it comes from the Department of Health and the Department of Education. So I think that I answered most of those questions about that part. Ensuring Continuity of Services is the next section, so we have academic supports for our students. We will be utilizing the NWA MAP assessment. This is an assessment we've been using in our district for about five years, which will give us a good baseline for our students because we know what the growth should be. So we'll be able to assess that because of the virtual learning and the shorter schedule last year. We also utilize the DRA and Running Records in our classrooms. DRA is the reading assessment. Running Records is another reading assessment. And then we will be utilizing, we will be administering the Start Strong Assessment in the fall. This is required from the state of New Jersey. Last year, the state got a waiver that they did not have to do the state assessments in the spring. That's the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, SLA. But the way they got, they were approved for the waiver to not do it last year was because we are now required to do it in the fall this year. So we will be doing the Start Strong Assessment. It's a similar format to the SLA, but it's a shorter assessment, and we're required to do that in, I think it's end of September, October? So we will be doing the Start Strong Assessment in October, and then we're still scheduled to do the SLA in the spring. So our academic supports that we have at our schools, all of our schools have a multi-tiered system of supports and response to intervention, RTI process. So any student who is having difficulty in any of their classes can go through those supports and be looked at by a team, which includes the parent, to make sure that we're providing what we can if there's any support that's needed for students. We also offer the Falcon Care Program before and after school care, and we will be continuing the Extended Childhood Enrichment, which is our wraparound kindergarten program. Curriculum and Assessments. We are always dedicated to providing the highest quality education to our students and we will continue to do that. Last year, we reviewed our curriculum and made some adjustments based on the shortened day, but we will be following our curriculum this year, utilizing technology. The instruction, it's, our staff is top-notch and they worked really hard to do everything that they could for our students last year. We heard a lot of positives. We do understand that there were some struggles, so we will, that's where the assessments will come in in the fall, so we can see exactly where our students are so that we can provide the instruction as appropriate. I already discussed the assessments and then the grading will continue to monitor for every student. Special education, again, that is individualized, so if there's a question about any of that, it will go through the case managers. I know I spent a couple, some time a couple of meetings ago talking about our social-emotional learning. This is something that's been ongoing in the district for the last several years and I heard a lot about anxiety from some of the parents that came up to, some of the parents and students that came up to speak tonight. So we have created school-based SEL teams, social-emotional learning teams, that are working right now to plan for the first few days of school so that we can help to build that community within each of the classrooms. So they will be providing some opportunities to the teachers that the teachers will be able to implement in their classrooms, and will also be doing some team building within our teachers because some of our teachers haven't been together either in the school. And then that will continue throughout the year. So they will continue to meet throughout the year. We did some training already last week. There is more training for those teams next week, and we will continue to plan throughout the year and plan activities for building community within the classrooms, mindfulness strategies, helping students deal with the anxiety, and as always, our Guidance Department is available too if there's a need. Food services. So I know this question came up also. So students are going to, all lunches are available free to all students for the school year. This is because of a school nutrition program grant, federal grant. So if a student takes a full lunch, and a full lunch includes the five components, that lunch, they will not be charged for that lunch. There will be some à la carte options available and parents will have to pay for à la carte options. There will be some à la carte options available at each school. The district will be, has looked at lunches. So I hear it. I hear what parents are saying about not having the masks in the lunches. So a couple of things that we're doing to hopefully mitigate any spread within the lunches because obviously we know that the masks are coming off during that time. At the elementary level, it's about 20 minutes by the time the students come in, get their lunches, sit down. They may not even be together for 15 minutes at a lunch table, but we are spreading out the students at the lunch table. We're also going to be cohorting students specifically at the middle school. Cohorting students, the students will stay with their teams. That way we can track any students. If we do have an outbreak, we can track students with the contact tracing to make sure that we identify where the students are. We did add an extra lunch period at the high school so that we can spread students out more. At the elementary level, we've looked at putting in barriers at some of the lunch tables, depending on the format of the lunch table in the schools. So we are looking at all of those options to do that. Students will be going outside for recess at the elementary level, as I mentioned already. Technology is the next section. So we will be reaching out to parents. Did that go out yet? No. We will be reaching out to parents because in the event that a class or students need to go to that full remote or the home instruction option, we want to make sure that the parents have that device that they need if they don't have one available at home. So we're going to make sure we have that data available prior to school starting. So we will have devices ready that we can deploy right away for students. We're also asking the school, each classroom, to set up their online presence. So asking the teachers in the first couple of days, set up that online presence so that if there is a need to go to a remote piece for whatever reason in the fall, we want to make sure that we're ready and we're not trying, we're not doing it at the last minute. The virtual instruction for quarantined students. Excuse me. So the virtual instruction is, this is specifically for students who are being quarantined due to COVID. So the question came up, will it start as soon as the student has symptoms or the student is positive for COVID? We have not gotten a final answer. We've asked that question of the county and I'm still awaiting that answer. That's a conversation that all of the superintendents in Middlesex County have been having. We asked the county superintendent this week, so hopefully I will get an answer of when the home instruction for quarantined students would be, but we would hope that it would start almost as soon as possible. Two hours of home instruction for each day missed for K to 5 students. That is very different. That's a two-hour, either a one-on-one or as much as one to three students. So it's a very small group, a very intense instruction. So yes, they will not be in the classroom for six hours, but it will be almost one-on-one instruction for those students. For six through eight students, it would be 30 minutes for each class missed. It does not have to be each day. If you want, if the teacher and the family decided to do an hour every other day, that would work, but it would be owed 30 minutes for each class. And nine through 12 students, it's 40 minutes for each class period missed. Virtual home instructors will be paid 15 minutes per day so that they can coordinate and prepare. We have, we do have quite a few teachers already on the agenda this evening who have applied to be virtual home instructors, and we actually have more that will be on next month's agenda because that part of the agenda was added on Friday. If there are students in the same class that qualify for virtual home instruction, the teacher can put up to three students together for that time period. So again, three students for two hours instead of 25 students for the six hours during the day. So it would be much more in-depth than it would be virtual. And PPS Office would be coordinating all of the home instruction. The last section of the plan is just what we have to do for public comment, so it's what we're presenting to you and what we've done in the district to have those conversations about the plan. And I'm just checking the list to see if I answered the questions. Comment on tents, if we can get additional tents. Yeah, the tent was, the tent for the high school actually was a cost to the district. We rented that test tent, so I don't know if that would be cost-effective to do that, but at the high school, but we do have areas at the high school where students could go outside under an overhang. So again, I would bring, I'll bring that back to Dr. Higgins and have that conversation. I think that was everything.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. So contrary to the many foul-mouthed doctors who lack civility, who attacked us and cursed and things like that, I had COVID. I was very sick. I ended up in the hospital. I ended up... I ended up in, in really bad shape. So for anybody who says this is just a cold, or this is just a flu, or this is fake news, or this is just a fake virus, get out of here, because that's nonsense. Number two is, with that being said, if we had people that were more civil and, and had decorum, maybe I'd be more likely to listen to them and hear their side of the story, instead of hearing what I heard tonight. It was disgusting. But I'll tell you this, we need to have a remote option for our kids. We can't just have, you know, I, like I said, I was sick, I had it. I don't, I know I couldn't, I wouldn't be able to get on and do classes even remotely. And, and to have one-on-one instruction and to have it condensed and have it, you know, I don't, I don't know that anybody who's sick, and it would vary by person as to, as to how sick they are. I don't know that they could do that. But I would think that if we had a remote option, there are long haulers. There are people who get sick and then have, you know, they, they carry this for a while. We need to have an option to allow our kids to be able to still go through school, even if they, they can't be in the classroom. And that's all I have to say about that.
Michelle, can I make a comment?
Please.
And, you know, to your point, Mr. Chiarella, the governor has in his, whatever the order or mandate is, you are, the school districts are allowed to offer a remote option if a student, a group of students, or an entire class has to quarantine. So I brought this up during the restart committee meeting. I do think you are correct, I, I agree with you. We do need to have a remote option other than this home instruction. Because the home instruction, and I said this at the restart committee meeting, it's a huge financial impact to the district. There are several districts that have listed out their plans, and their plans do include having remote option, not remote home instruction, but a remote option. We went through an entire school year where the students attended remotely. If they have to quarantine, that should be an option to them. You know, and it is allowed right now. For quarantining, if you have to quarantine due to COVID, you are allowed to have a remote option. The governor has not allowed a remote option for parents that just choose to not want to send their children to school, but for quarantining, you are allowed to have a remote option. And I think that this plan fails to address that, and I, and I do not agree with it. I think it's a, a, a plan for us to fail, quite honestly. I don't think we can sustain home instruction. I, I think it's too much of a financial impact. And I don't think it allows for students who want to continue to be part of their classroom, who may not have COVID and still have to quarantine, for, they should be, have the opportunity to log into their classroom. I, I don't think excluding them for a long period of time, maybe 10 days, because maybe their family does not believe in getting the COVID test, and they're going to be required to, to return, even if they don't have COVID. I think it's, it's irresponsible for us to refuse to allow them to join their class remotely, when we have the technology and we saw that it worked last year. Secondly, we seem to, in this plan, go between the Department of Health and the CDC. And this came up also in the restart committee meeting, under response to symptomatic students and staff. It says, follow all CDC guidance for quarantine in close contacts. But that is not what this plan is going to do. The CDC has put out an exception for K through 12 students. If everybody in the class is wearing a mask, they, there's an exception that the close contact would not be the three-to-six-foot rule. And it came up that the Department of Health has not put that guidance out, and that we were not going to follow that. However, that is absolutely ridiculous. And if we're going to write in here that we're following the CDC, then we need to follow what the CDC is saying. And I said it at the committee meeting. If there's a question of, will the Department of Health let us do that, follow the CDC guidelines, then this board and this administration needs to go to the Department of Health now and ask them to clarify that. Not wait for guidance, because we don't have time to wait. And as one of the administrators said at the committee meeting, that exception is a game changer, because that will allow us to not put a large group of students on quarantine that don't have to be. So I just, you know, we have to be accurate in what we're putting in here. And from what I heard tonight, and from what I heard at the committee meeting, we are not just following CDC guidelines. We're, we're going between, you know, which do we want to follow? You know, if the CDC is saying we can do something, then we need to follow that. We can't say, well, the Department of Health hasn't told us that yet. Well, then we need to go to the Department of Health. You know, honestly, right now, I don't feel good about the start of school at all. Because I feel like we-
The what? I'm sorry.
I don't feel like we are, have a actual, real good plan to begin school. I, I don't think we, I'm really sad to say that, but I, I think this is not a plan that is going to make for a successful school year.
So I just have a question for Chrissy, for clarification purposes. And I can't find it now, but I, I thought the rule was students in close contact for more than 15 minutes wear the mask. As long as they're vaccinated, don't have to quarantine. You're saying-
No, it wasn't vaccine, regardless of vaccination.
And that's CDC or DOH?
That was CDC.
All right, thank you.
I, it is, look, this is a moving target. It has been for a long time. Everyone's passionate about this, and we all want this to be over, there's no question. When anyone talks about, it, it would, this would be, I think, prudent of all of us. When any of us on this board, or, or those in the public who have serious, you know, comments, we should, we should provide the most recent documentation. I think we should not just say what the thing is that the last time we read, because things can change. Because it, you know, certainly if you believe that this is a viral virus, and that is, is moving in, in different directions, things change very rapidly. And what is acceptable today is not acceptable tomorrow. We were all hoping that there would be no masks to open the school, and things have changed. So I think we, it is, it is, while I totally agree with where you're coming from, I think we have to know the latest, and unfortunately, that changes. So let's have a plan with the latest information, and then just say, and it is open to a correction or a move in a different direction, depending on, you know, what we, we feel is safe. But I, I think that we have the CDC guidelines. They're sometimes slow to change things, and that's a national guideline. We have local, our local guidelines, and our state issues. And, and, and it, it's been, it's been frustrating. It's been, we're all fearful, we have all kinds of anxiety about it. We all want to do the right thing, but, but it's a moving target. So we have to be very careful what we put out as the most recent information. And we should document what we're saying, so everybody's in the same place.
Can I answer that, Michelle?
Yes.
So it was debated, it was debated in the restart committee. And, you know, one of the administrators or faculty brought up the latest of the CDC. And then one of the nurses went on as well, and showed as of, you know, a couple of days before the meeting, that it was updated again by the CDC with a footnote that that exception still remains in effect. So I, I could have copied it and handed it out to everybody. My point is this, if that is the guidance from the CDC, we are not doing that. Okay? And if there's a question between can, will the Department of Health allow that or not, then we need to proactively go to them and ask them. Because what we're doing right now is we're setting up ourselves to have a, a lot of students have to quarantine that under CDC guidelines do not have to. And then that equates to a lot of students, then we're not going to allow them to have a remote option to join their class. No, we're going to go to this home instruction. You know, it's a ripple effect of not following the CDC guidelines, and that has a hu, a huge financial impact, a huge educational impact. We're going to be excluding a lot more students from the classroom than we would need to. It, it's not right. The CDC put out that exception to help school, districts function, and not have to put that many students on quarantine that don't have to be. And again, if the, if there's a question of, how does the Department of Health feel? We can't sit around and wait for them to come to us. We need to go to them, and we need to go to them right now and see what, how they feel about that, because that has a huge impact on how we operate.
Karen. And it feels like we're making a deliberate choice here about home instruction versus remote option, compounded by not minimizing the risk of quarantine to the students. We've already seen issues and confusion with the football team a couple of weeks ago, and who had a quarantine, and who didn't have to quarantine, and who had a test, and who didn't have to test. Nobody knows. It, it's, it's still sloppy. And this is now going to carry into not the 50 kids involved in that program, but into the 7,000 kids and all their families. I, I'm not comfortable that we know what we're doing here. I don't see this home instruction list seems very slim on the business action items for the lists. There's some schools that don't even have more than two or three.
It's only been posted for a short time. So there are more staff members that have applied for it that you don't see on here yet, because this was the list as of Thursday.
Okay. And are they going to, I mean, we don't have estimates. We have no way of knowing what the numbers of quarantine are going to be, what the resources are going to be needed for the home instruction, how this is going to play out financially, or with the SEL with the children. My other understanding with the home instruction, to Ken's question, was that if the child was sick and not able to participate and be involved in an intense home instruction environment, that this home instruction could be carried out straight through, like, the end of the school year, that there was no obligation that the home instruction had to happen one-to-one, as they missed the time in the class, that it could kind of be packaged and delivered over the course of the whole remainder of the school year, so that they get the hours that they need for the graduation. So there is some opportunity and benefit to make it be valuable and productive for the child. But still, is it better than remote instruction? It's certainly not cheaper than remote instruction. So I still think we need to be exploring that as an ongoing option, to be able to provide and offer it.
Mr. Rusk, did you want to-
Yeah, well, I wanted to go back and just finish. I, I heard what you said, and made me just realize, I wanted to just, A, thank Mr. Chiarella for saying what he said, and the comment that he said, which was an excellent message to the public. Because we're so much, we're all here to echo what you said, because we're here for the children. And we're here trying to make sure that we're following the rules to the best of our ability, and giving the children the best experience as possible. And that's what everybody's here for, from top to bottom. With that said, a question based on, on the current conversation. So Dr. Alvek, did, did, has there been consideration, or was there discussion about the idea of whatever, however the classes were when they were hybrid, and the teacher had a camera, and she was teaching to some kids in the class, but also kids at home? Was that considered and discussed?
Yes, we absolutely discussed that with the administrative team, with the teachers' union. We've discussed that. The issue with that is now the teachers are not going to have three or six students in front of them in the classroom, and the other half on the computer. They may have 24 students in front of them and one student on the computer. So it's going to be very difficult for the teacher to monitor that during the school day.
So, but the, but the student would still be able to sort of participate or, or follow along with class?
If we set it up like that, but they wouldn't have-
She wouldn't be teaching to that student, of course. She'd be teaching to the class, but the child at home would be able to at least sort of watch along. Okay. I, I just, I just would hope that that's part of the discussion, and under some consideration, because I, I would agree that that's, that's a better option, I think. If it's, if it's doable, if we have the techno, technology and personnel, and it's allowed, I, I think that's something that should be considered. Thank you.
Anybody, I have a few questions, Dr. Alvek, just to go over some of the things that the public was aware. So we have air conditioning in most of the classrooms, correct?
Yes.
But, but airflow is still important, even with air conditioning on. So we are going to periodically, or leave some high windows open? I mean, that might be costly, but it's in the best interest of the health conditions.
There has to be a certain amount of fresh air in each classroom. So we do have the dampers open to whatever the recommendation is for the, for, for the ventilation. But it is also recommended that it has some fresh air, yes. And we do that for the buses also.
I think maybe we could also talk about costs of some tents, you know, and put them outside, or, or have the kids, in the different, in the different schools. It would certainly be up to a conversation with the principals about maybe walking them outside, you know, every couple hours, or, or doing something, not to interrupt the classrooms, but maybe, I don't know, sometime, maybe twice a day, if they get to go outside, or just walk around. I mean, we have, we have fire drills and things like that, so maybe we can sort of like simulate, not, not to have a fire drill, but let them go outside and walk. And again, it might distract a little bit from instruction time, but we are, we are still in this, in this think-out-of-the-box kind of time. Go ahead.
And, and, and I agree with you, and I think that, I, I think that the comment was made about recess for high school. And I know that's hard to fit into our scheduling, but it wouldn't be hard to fit in breaks where, like you were just saying, where maybe they go for, they can go out for a walk, go outside on the, on the, the days when we have nice weather, those kind of things.
So, and, so the ventilation, we've had the ventil, the ventilation cleaned and everything.
Yes, with the very first COVID grant that we received, we did all of the vent cleaning. And like Dr. Alvek said, we have all the MERV filters. And the, and the fresh air with the dampers wide open is allowing the most fresh air to come into the buildings.
I think that's what, I think for the most part, we have answered some of the questions. And again, the lunch, each, each building principal can be reached for further information. May I say that?
Yeah, and more information will be sent out from the schools as we start. Now we're only a few weeks out, so.
And, and please understand that again, I mean, I, I am not trying to make excuses. I'm trying to explain the intense inconsistency of, and, and newness, even though everybody says, well, we've been doing this for 18 months. Well, this is, again, a moving target. We are trying to, unfortunately, it's almost like we have to be reactionary rather than proactive. We, we all want to be proactive. I take Ms. Skirby's point, that we should have a plan, we should be proactive. But that plan could, we could take hours for, for the planning, as well we should. But then the next day, if something happens, we have to, we have to be, we still have to be free to make some adjustments. And we, you know, in the best interest of, of, of the children, that we have to, you know, keep an open mind here and, and try to do it. Did you want, Ms. Belko?
I just, I just had two comments. One is, I very easily found the CDC information. Unfortunately, I can't get into my email here, otherwise I'd email it to the board. But the report Dr. Alvek gave us does follow most of what's here for the CDC, with the exception of this section, number eight. So I was a little, you know, when I was following it, I was going back and forth with both of those. So that was, so to Chrissy's point, you know, we're, we shouldn't be cherry-picking what we're going to do. We should be saying we're not following it, and we're not following it. So I agree with that point. The other thing I wanted to ask was to have to do with the MERV filters. What is the recommended replacement of those? How often should they be replaced? And are we following those guidelines?
I'm going to say, yes, we're following those guidelines. I don't know what that information is.
Okay, so if we asked Mr. Take, you'd be able to give us that information?
Madam President, that might be something discussion-worthy at the next PGT committee meeting.
Okay, great. Mr. Chiarella, can you bring that back to Mr. Tivana for the next meeting agenda? Thank you. And I did have one more comment that went right out of my head.
Can I just answer one, one piece of that? Please. Where I reference the CDC guidance in the plan is what was, what the Department of Health has adopted from the CDC.
Okay, then I second, then I would, would go, would back up Mrs. Skirby's suggestion that we specifically take this number eight, and I have to look and see what it is. He's going to send it to everybody, but it's number eight in here. And the language is very specific about fully vaccinated, close contacts, and also close contacts who are not fully vaccinated. And that is information that we would have on most. And if we, you know, people want to be in school, then, you know, they'll let us know whether they're vaccinated or not. I do think that, you know, we've, you know, I do think, Dr. Alvek, you did answer most of the questions. I think lunch is going to be a challenge. I do think that we need to be patient, but I also agree, we need to have a remote option. I don't think home instruction is going to serve the students well, who will need to quarantine. And it, but if we can follow this guidance from the CDC, we will have to worry about that less than, if we're not, if we have to follow the other guidance.
Mr. Rusk, did you-
No, I'm counting people. I'm just trying to-
Just very quickly, I think it might be helpful for the public to understand the hierarchy, hierarchy of authority here. Is it the CDC? Is it the New Jersey Department of Health? Can we pick and choose standards from either one? Doctor, would you- Can we pick and choose standards from either one? Doctor, would you mind?
And that's kind of what I was saying. We are required to follow the, what we receive from the Department of Health and the Department of Education. The Department of Health and the Department of Education, for the most part, do adopt the CDC, but they have not on this part. So I will reach out to the Department of Health and see if we can follow that, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Michelle, I had one other thing. One other thing that came up in the restart committee meeting that I don't think is included in this plan was students that do not wear a mask. And if I remember correctly, from what was said at the meeting was that the state requires to provide education for students ages six through 15, and that if a student was not coming to school because they did not want to wear the mask, that we were required to continue to educate them. And again, that was going to be done through home instruction. So as we saw tonight, there's a large amount of parents that do not feel that their students are, that their children should wear a mask and may opt to keep them home. And again, if we don't have that remote option for them, we're going to be increasing our need to, we have to educate them. So that's going to add on to the home instruction piece. And I just, again, we really need to have some sort of virtual option for these students to join their classes.
But I, my understanding was that the governor said that was not going to be available. If you chose not to send your kid to school for other than the quarantine, then there was no remote option available. That was in, I believe, the law. So we'll check on that.
But the district is planning on giving them home instruction.
Not those students.
Yes, that's what came up at the restart meeting.
It's still a question that hasn't been answered by the county superintendent. That was a question that was brought up, and I mentioned that the other day, because, that was a question, because is it truancy because the parent is choosing to not send their child to school because of the mask mandate? And if it's truancy, then are we required to provide home instruction? And that's a question that we're still waiting for an answer from the county superintendent.
Again, we have, we go ahead, Karen.
Our legal guidance, I don't know where he went, but his letter did indicate that we would be protected here, that those not wearing a mask would be considered not so much truancy, but would be not covered under this and that. They would not be entitled to.
Let's hope that it's not an enormous amount. I mean, you know, we want to educate our children, but we have to have some uniformity. I mean, it's just untenable.
Do they then, they're then considered homeschoolers essentially, and then they pay for their homeschooling?
Parents can opt to pull their students out of school and homeschool their child. All they would have to do is send a letter to the assistant superintendent's office saying that they were doing that.
And then homeschooling is an expense to the parent, not to the school district?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear about that. Thank you.
I mean, that, you know, that opens up a lot of other issues. So we have to have some guidance and some parameters in order to follow.
And we have to have a plan for the students that don't come to school.
On that one. Okay. Anyone else?
Okay. All right. The HIB Annual Report, I'm going to pull until next month. There was one change that I need to make on the report before I present it, so I'm going to pull that until next month and add it there. So that brings us to the personnel agenda. I do want to congratulate Mrs. Audrey Mahler, special education teacher at Mill Lake School who is retiring on November 1st after 19 years of providing services in our district. So, thank you. And with that, it's recommended that the board approve the attached Personnel Items A through AQ.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Second.
And second, Mr. Chiarella. I just have a real quick question. We have some new positions, occupational therapists, and I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the physicians now, not the person. And yet we are going into a, we're going, in our packet, we have United Therapy Solutions for other professional appointments, and then also Therapy Travelers. And they seem to be doing the same thing that we're hiring in occupational, can you explain that?
We still have a large number of students that need the services, and we utilize our own staff as best we can, but if there's a need to bring in a consultant, we have to do that.
Okay, and these are as needed?
As needed.
Because some of, and I don't know if this is the one I was reading, some of the conditions of the contract are, and it might not be these contracts, but I just wanted to know. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, Mr. Rutske?
Roll call, yes.
Yes, please.
Personnel Items A through AQ moved by Mr. Nikotinsky, seconded by Mr. Chiarella. Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes on everything, and on AQ, no on Corinne Lanza.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes to all with the exception to AQ. I'm a no on Lanza, comma, Corinne.
Ms. Belko?
Yes on everything except AQ. I'm also a no on Lanza, Corinne.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes to all except on AQ, no to Corinne Lanza, based on the discussion and information presented to us by the superintendent and personnel.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes on everything. I'm going to recuse myself on AQ for Corinne Lanza.
Madam President?
Yes, except for AQ and Ms. Lanza. No on that. I just, I just think there's a misspelling on here. Do we need to correct that now? I think Zahara Ploner? Ploner, that's a misspelled.
Which page is that on?
Page 24 of 33.
What other is that on that?
Oh, she's a teacher. So I don't know, is that a substitute teacher? AO, AO.
Ploner.
That's the, there may be others, but that's the only one I picked up. Okay?
Next. Madam President, the motion passes with the exception of AQ.
Okay, thank you.
Can I jump a quick question in here, Michelle, maybe?
Well, the voting's over, but.
Yeah, voting's over, but I can't help but feel a little bit blindsided. It seems like everybody knew something and some information was given about one of these proposed employees that I was not privy to know, and I voted before everybody else. And so I just, I just wanted to point that out, that I have no idea what anybody's talking about or why this person was not.
It's a personnel issue.
Right. So once through the committee, then it somehow should be shared or somehow it was shared. Well, I had no idea. That's all. My only point is I'm a total.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's probably a question that can't be answered in this forum anyway, but you're certainly free to talk to the superintendent or the chair of the Personnel Committee. It just, not something that can be addressed. I don't know it myself, by the way, but we can't address it now.
Right, because there's no personnel notes.
Because when, yeah.
But even for, even for us, there's no personnel notes.
Can we call other board members after a personnel meeting and explain that in the future?
There's nothing that prevents, as long as there's no QuAM involved, there's nothing that prevents that sort of dialogue.
That would, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying that the dialogue can't take place in a public forum like this. It doesn't mean it can't be shared.
Of course.
Yeah.
But there's notes on every other committee meeting.
Right, but personnel is confidential. There's no, you know.
Again, confidential for those out in the public, not confidential for those who sit on this board.
Right, I agree.
Okay. Moving on to Board Action. It's recommended that the board approve the attached Board Action Items A through K.
Move. I'll move.
Second.
Okay, we have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just have one question. Dr. Alvik, what is the calendar change?
The calendar change is we added the Juneteenth day off, June 17th in June.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And that's required.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Skirby?
I think that's great. I'm just curious, is that going to be listed on the calendar as Juneteenth?
We don't list any of the holidays on there. We just list the days that it's closed.
Okay. That was my question. If we were going to list one, that we should list all.
And if there's no other questions, we'll take a roll call.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes on everything except K, the bylaw 0164.2.
Where you vote.
I vote no on the electronic, the use of electronic devices, some of the language in that.
So noted. Board Action Items A through K has passed.
Okay. That concludes my report.
Okay. Mr. Rutske, I think you're up.
Madam President, before I introduce my report, I was speaking with Dr. Alvik today, and there was a couple of questions that were raised by board members having to do with the cafeteria operations. And if it so pleases, I'll address those in brevity. The first question was, I was wondering if you can share what the final total amount of reimbursement we received for the summer breakfast slash lunch program and what our cost was to run it. I spoke with Cindy Schaller, our Food Service Director, and in technical detail, we did not run a summer breakfast program. However, we did run a seamless summer option known as SSO for the full year. So the figures that I'm going to present are preliminary fiscal results for that SSO cafeteria operation for the full year. And the total reimbursement that we received was $683,622. From vending and catering, it was an additional $7,584 for total revenue under SSO of $692,689. $692,689 is the revenues. And the total cost, including salaries and benefits and expenditures and supplies, was $512,289. $512,289. So that's a preliminary net income of $180,400. It is preliminary. We're still making adjustments to this program for depreciation and things like that, so it is subject to change. The next question.
That was a program reimbursed by the federal government?
Yes.
Okay. Under the COVID?
It was additional money from the federal government that was passed down through the state.
Okay.
Yes. And it increased our reimbursement rate for that.
Okay.
And that continues, as Dr. Alvik said, into next year where all lunches are free. However, it is important note to parents to please still continue to fill out the Free and Reduced Lunch Application Form. And you could be subject to monies from the federal government that is, will be paid directly to you based on last year's eligibility. So please contact Cindy Schaller, our Food Service Director, if you have any questions about that. But it's imperative to fill out the Free and Reduced Lunch Application, even if you're checking you don't want it, or if you're eligible, there could be a cash benefit from last year. The second question that we received was about the reimbursement rates. Can we quantify how many lunches district-wide we anticipate serving in the 21-22 school year and the additional revenue this will bring to the district? Is it a correct assumption concerning this being a revenue driver similar to the summer lunch breakfast program? And I discussed that with Dr. Alvik and, again, Ms. Schaller, Food Service Director. And Ms. Schaller's comments are as follows. At this point, with the uncertainty we are facing closing in on the beginning of the school year, I would be hesitant in forecasting any increase in participation other than what we budgeted for in the spring, which was close to normal participation as we have had in the past. We can certainly revisit this after the school year opens, and we can get some time under our belt to see how COVID will impact the operations short term. I will be glad to update the Finance Committee in early October and provide some data to gauge how we are performing versus budget. So I hope those satisfied those inquiries. And with that, Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through L be approved by consent. Roll call.
I'll move.
I'll second that.
Mr. Rutske seconds it. Okay. Mr. Rutske, go ahead. Any, I'm sorry, any questions? Does anyone want to make a comment before we move on? Okay, go ahead.
Roll call?
Yes, please.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
And Madam President?
Yes.
Board Action Items A through L has passed. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And that, I believe, the Board President's report is next. Well, I've spoken about this throughout the whole meeting. We are a board of a whole. We act in unison. We are not, we cannot make decisions individually for this district. And we have worked, for the most part, very collaboratively and in the best interest of what we believe to be is in the best interest of our students. We rely on our administrators to give us recommendations. We don't always agree with those, and we do push back sometimes, but that is the nature of probably our community and our democracy. And I appreciate everyone's patience and decorum when those discussions occur. So the community, we want, and I don't mean it to sound hollow or rhetorical, the parents want the best for their children, we want the best for our students, and we want the best for our community. It is not always easy to give everyone what they want or what they think is in the best interest of their student. And every parent, while they need to make a decision for their own child, we have to think of everyone else's child. No one wants their child to be sick, but we don't want to have anyone else's child in an environment that could also make them sick. I am not a doctor. We don't know really how this is. Have we made some, do we have some misunderstandings, miscalculations? Perhaps we have. But we are, we are all in this together, and we, in my, and I'm just speaking personally now, I think we all need to be cognizant of our neighbors, our community, and yes, our own children and ourselves. And we want to take care of them and have them in the safest manner possible. But we live, we don't live in a society of one. We live in our community, and we should look to each other to take care of each other. We don't always have to agree, and we may want to argue about what is in the best interest. But let us please be understanding of other people's positions, but also cognizant of protecting each other. Thank you. It's all been said before. We just sometimes have to keep sort of hearing it. And no one, that's it. I've said enough. Okay. There is, next is other board business, other Board of Education business. Ms. Belko?
Yes. I sat here, like my colleague, Mr. Chiarella, listening to parents, very passionate, very emotional, at times disrespectful, but I can understand when passion reaches that level, it is hard sometimes. And I too, like Mr. Chiarella, had COVID in the early days back in 2020, and fortunately was not as sick as you can. But I did, it was very early on, and have some strong opinions about what is happening in our country right now, in our town, in our local area, and have dealt with some moral and some ethical decisions I've had to make over the last few weeks in order to maintain my employment. And so in hearing what I heard from everyone, I am going to say personally, I believe in the choice of masking, and I do not agree with what has come forth from the governor. However, as a member of However, as a member of the Board of Education, who I swore an oath that I would uphold the law, I sit here with a mask on my face, and you can go back to last month's meeting, and you can see that I did not have a mask on my face. So my choice, obviously you know what it is. What I'd like to propose to this board currently is that we, as, I'd like to make a motion that this board send a letter to Governor Murphy from the board to request, to request a rollback of EO 251, particularly regarding to masking being mandated, and to allow masking to be optional for parents sending their children to school in our district, in any district in this state, pre-K to 12, and the super seniors. I don't want to lose, I don't want to leave out our super seniors in our district.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Anybody for discussion on that? Go ahead, John.
I would like to say that I did attend the governor's announcement of the mandate at the elementary school in East Brunswick a couple of weeks ago, when he made that announcement, I went there as a private citizen in protest, feeling that this is government overreach, and that by now, we should be able to do these things through legislation versus executive order and flying the banner of this being an emergency situation in perpetuity. So that being said, I would also support Ms. Belko's motion, saying that we should reach out to the governor and at least ask for the repeal, and try to get this to go through the proper legal channels of legislation and not through mandate. Anyone else?
I just want to say that I think that, I think it's ridiculous that the whole thing has become political, so right from the get-go, we, a virus became a political weapon and a tool, and it's been used by both sides to make points and to attack each other when, and people's lives are in jeopardy, people are dying, people are getting sick, and I just think that's ridiculous. I think that as, as adults and as citizens in this country, we should all just, honestly just grow up and, and see?
Ken speaks the truth.
And that's it, that's all.
Well, I'm just going to speak for myself, while I appreciate the motion, and I, I still feel I'm not equipped as, to make that kind of medical decision, and I'm, I think I will be on the side of maybe more, more conservative, but I appreciate the motion. Anyone else? Chrissy?
Yeah, I, you know, it's a, it's a very hard decision, I think, as a parent and, and as somebody who agrees in, you know, personal freedoms. I, I know I spoke at, you know, previous meetings about the, the choice, that we should allow parents to have a choice, that if they feel it inhibits their child's health, that that should be their right to, to say that their child should not wear it. However, then, you know, you have the Academy of Pediatrics coming out saying that all children in schools should be masked, you have the CDC saying it, you know, I personally, I was, I kept my children home last year remote because I was not comfortable sending them to school in a mask, so that was my personal decision to keep them home. I then, you know, recently, we went for well visits, we went to asthma and allergy doctor, we went to the pediatrician, and I had very long conversations with them about what to do, you know, should I be, should my children be wearing a mask? My, my son, at three years old, was in the ICU, and, you know, his lung collapsed, we, we went through a really bad tragedy that ended, thank God, he was okay, but, you know, it, it, these viruses are very real and do affect children, and maybe there's not a massive amount of children dying from it, but even one is too many. And, you know, both doctors sat down with me, and I brought up, you know, all of the stuff I'm reading on social media, and they, their opinion as medical professionals was the safest thing for children right now is to have the mask on. You look at what's going on, I think in Louisiana, there's a school that had, that has several teachers on respirators, they have, I think, 50-some kids on quarantine, there's bad things going on down south, you turn on the news and you watch it, and we, you know, there's a, a parent that left Monroe and actually moved down there, and it's her school district, and she's sharing it firsthand with us what's going on down there, so it's not just, you know, turning on CNN and being, you know, watching fake news, we're hearing from people that are in the South. So I understand, Katie, exactly what you're saying, and Karen, it's, I really don't know how I personally, because I don't know if I can, if that is, like you said, Michelle, I'm not a medical professional, and if I'm listening to these people who are supposed to be medical professionals saying this is the best thing to, to provide safety in our schools, I don't know how I, I'd be against it. I, I understand personal choice, I get that, I, I, it, it, it puts Board of Educations and, and districts in very bad positions to have the mandate, and I agree, Karen, maybe it should be handled through legislation and not come down from the mandate of just one governor in one state versus another governor in another state, so, you know, maybe that is the way to go about it, asking for it to come through legislation and not a mandate. I don't know, it's a very tough decision.
And I think that's where we start, is with this motion, is to, because then we can say, you know, we are, you've put us in a, in a, in a difficult position, and, and as a nurse, and, and most of you out there know that I am a nurse, yes, there is lots of information out there, and we're being given lots of information through the news, through news media, and also through research, and also through other things, and there's a lot of information out there, and at times, I believe that we're only being fed part of the information because of, of the way that information is given and shared through, through the main news media. As a master's prepared nurse, I do a lot of my own research in the medical journals, and in the nursing journals, and in the studies that are going on, and so that's why I feel that making this motion to give it, to leave it to people's choice, just like at the moment, vaccines are a choice for most of the population, those of us in healthcare are not being given a choice at this point. And, and I, and so there's a lot out there, and I do think that in order to start making the legislation be responsible for the, what, what the rules are instead of executive orders coming, because that's not how our body of government works. I remember we're learning in civics class that we have three branches of government, and what I've seen in the last two years is one branch of government making all the rules. So that's why I'd like this board to have some, I'm just going to say it, have some backbone, and, and push back to the governor and say, it's time.
Anybody else?
If I may. So I'm not against writing a letter, and I'm not against requesting that the governor reconsider his decision, I would just like to be slightly the optimist in the room and say, when the numbers, this is a very fluid situation, and when the numbers did come down in the spring and into the summer, I got to tell you, I had a really nice, normal spring and summer, and there were no masks to be seen, and it was people's choice, and it was a great thing. Well, unfortunately, the fluidity of this situation is changing, the Delta variant's gotten stronger, and maybe because we all had our masks off, it's now spreading rapidly again. So I guess my optimism is, we all do what we're asked to do as citizens, get your vaccination, wear your mask, let's get the numbers back down again, and then, in short order, I assume, I would hope we could revisit this on a monthly basis. I would like to think at some point, we're going to go back to its, within a few months, it's a choice, and then everybody can make their own choice. Vaccinations is a whole nother thing, because I got to give everybody a heads up, like there are mandatory vaccinations, once this becomes like FDA legit vaccination, more than likely, we're going to be able to say kids have to have their vaccinations, workers will be able to say you have to have your vaccination, just like measles, mumps, rubera, and any of the others, that's just something we might as well prepare ourselves for because it's going to be a whole nother discussion, and it's not far off. Thank you.
Not to belabor the point, but I, I, I find that choice in, in, in this medical situation is a false equivalent to the worrying about, you know, contracting the disease. I'm old enough to, probably right before I was born, Jonas saw, had the polio vaccine. My mom had a dear friend, a lifelong friend, who had polio, and I can assure you that if any parent who was objecting to even just wearing the mask, I'm not going to get into the vaccine, saw the life that that woman lived because she was not able, you know, the polio vaccine didn't exist when she was growing up, would certainly consider and think about what we're going through. So let's have a roll call if no one else is.
Madam President?
Yeah.
Just a recommendation, Ms. Belko, in the past where the board wished to send its sentiment to the legislators, it did so with a certified resolution that was adopted by the board. Would you prefer to send a certified resolution enacting everything that you put into your motion tonight in the form of a certified reso, or would you rather have a letter, and if it's a letter, who's going to write it, and I need the exact content to go in it? So obviously, my recommendation is a certified reso, that's how we've expressed our will in the past as a board.
If, if we need to do that, that is fine, I'd be happy to pen a draft for Michelle's approval, if it passed, I mean, obviously it has to pass.
I think we need to, you, you, you made the motion as a resolution.
As a letter.
As a letter?
Yeah, I can say motion to, to send a resolution to the governor.
In the form of, yeah.
In the form, you know, and then.
Is the, just one point of clarification, because I suspect I'm going to be asked to look at this, that the executive order be rescinded and that the issue be submitted to the legislature? Is that, is that, are those the fundamental elements, or is the legislature not part of your motion?
I wasn't considering the legislature, my esteemed colleague here brought that up, if we want to add that into that, I, I would accept that as a friendly amendment to my resolution.
Yeah, of course, I'm, I'm not advocating, I'm just trying to make sure that whatever is penned by the Board Secretary captures what the motion is, so clearly, the rescinding of the executive order, I've got that part. So you can certainly submit it for a friendly amendment, I honestly forget who seconded it, your motion.
Ms. Nikotinsky?
So the question is, do you want to say rescind, period, or do you want to say rescind and submit this matter to the legislature?
You second it, I, I think, at this point.
Send it to the governor.
I, we just need to send something to the governor, I, I don't think we need to worry about the legislator right now, I think.
Legislatures are going to be a waste of time.
Yeah, we're, I would just say that we'll just.
Limited to the rescinding of the executive order, that's the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so there's your answer.
Thank you for clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Spearman?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
And Madam President?
No.
Motion passes.
Next, anybody else for new business?
Board Business?
Board Business, yes, please.
Yeah, I have one thing quickly.
Yes.
I just want to thank Mr. Rutzke, so, because, you know, he, he had reached out to me after our prior finance meeting and brought up, you know, how to, how to, how to maybe break the, the charges down for the iPads, so I thought that was a great idea, and, and I know that, you know, then we adopted that tonight, so I just wanted to thank him for coming up with that, and, and then feeling that he could reach out to me and discuss it.
That's what we need to do.
Yep. Anybody else, new board business? Seeing none, then I will open the floor again to the public forum, if you'd like to speak on anything, not necessarily the agenda, but hopefully related to the district. Yes, please.
Hi, Deborah Pala, 15 Louise Lane, thank you for readdressing the outdoor areas and time outside for the higher grade, I appreciate that. Regarding the 15-minute CDC rule that was mentioned earlier, and looking back to see if it was CDC or who it was, and whether or not in classroom, just trying to come up with solutions and thinking unconventionally, is there any thought to moving the kids around every 14 minutes within their classrooms, so you really never need to quarantine a whole classroom? Something to, sounds funny and sounds ridiculous, but stranger things have happened, so just a thing to think about. Regarding what Ms. Kirby had said about virtual, and the different options that we have right now, the instruction versus school, I, I agree about the exposure. My child was exposed for a half an hour, which is above the 15 minutes, felt fine, had no, absolutely no symptoms, and couldn't cheer, and could not do another sport for this full seven days, as we put her in quarantine, got the testing done, so she was locked up in her room, food delivered to her door, you know, the whole nine yards. I think if she had virtual instruction, instead of virtual learning, it would have been detrimental to her, she would have been secluded even further, and by having her being healthy and having the ability to actually be learning and not, and being on the quarantine, but a healthy quarantine, would really be a difficult situation specifically for her, and I just want to have it reconsidered about having that be an option. Besides the cost savings, which seemed to be abundantly clear, but I just want to say, missing classes and being healthy in a quarantine, and then doing the extra learning, just seems like it would be better for the kids to be within a class, involved, and still seeing their peers and their teachers one-on-one, just to make sure there's nothing missed during that lesson. So I just want to reiterate, I, I agree completely with that, thank you.
Hi, it's Kate Ratner again, 2 Kings Court. Mr. Chiarella and Ms. Belko, I'm really sorry to hear that you both had to deal with COVID. You know, I do hear those who say that children are at a significantly lower risk of serious illness, you know, but I have a close friend who had her 18-month daughter in daycare contract COVID, and the daughter is fine, but she gave it to both my friends and both of my friend's parents, and within a week, my friend's father had passed away. You know, so obviously, you know, the child is fine, but my friend is never going to forgive herself for what happened, even though there's nothing that she did wrong. You know, I also have a family member who was in the hospital for five weeks on a vent, almost on a ventilator when she was six months pregnant. So that, you know, there are just a lot of things, and people should realize that COVID is real, you know, it's not something that was made up, you know, and so we need to find options and solutions to those people who can't wear masks, you know, either because they're high-risk, or they can't wear masks for medical reasons, but still give them a quality education. You know, I understand if a child is unable to wear a mask due to medical conditions, I might have missed it, but I'm still slightly unclear as if to whether if a child is not able to wear a mask, they're still allowed to be in the building. But my question is, if we are requiring all students, except for those with a medical exception, to wear masks because it will protect both themselves and others around them, then is it really fair to the kid who's sitting next to that child with a medical exemption to have to be next to someone who doesn't have a mask, which graders their risk of practically, of possibly contracting it? Ms. Kirby, like you, my child, with my son, who's now four, was actually very sick and in the pediatric ICU for five days, right when he turned two, due to RSV, and he still deals with very bad asthma in the winter. You know, so if my daughter, who luckily doesn't have that same problem, but if she catches it from another student and then gives it to him, that's really scary to me. So I think we really need to just look at all of these different scenarios and come up with solutions to give every child a quality education. And then, I also, you know, on another topic, just had a quick question and comment regarding the iPad program. My daughter is in fifth grade, and she's my oldest, so we haven't really dealt with it yet. You know, however, when I first heard about it, I thought it was a great idea, it serves, it could serve a lot of purposes, but after the iPad fee discussion, I spoke with a couple of high school parents who told me how it is and is not used, and I was kind of shocked to find out that high school students still receive test books for almost every class. I had assumed that the iPads were sort of a substitute for this reason, and I figured that not having to constantly buy new physical books would help subsidize the cost of the iPads, as well as keep students from having to carry around heavy backpacks or huge stacks of books that actually can cause health problems as well. You know, there are so many textbooks that are available electronically now, I'm not sure why we wouldn't switch to electronic textbooks to save money and space, especially if we are requiring that technology in our school. You know, even though I admit to being an Apple product fan myself, I also realize that Apple products are far more expensive than other brands, so instead of having parents have to shell out $170 now, which is lower than before, why not have parents and students purchase a Chromebook when they start at the high school? They cost roughly the same amount as the iPad fee that was just announced today, but then students can keep them at the end of high school, it's also a lot easier to type on a keyboard and a Chromebook than on a tablet. You know, there may be other aspects to. You know, there may be other aspects to the program that I am unaware of, but I definitely think that it might be worth revisiting if the iPad program is justified. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm surprised to hear that there are students with a lot of textbooks, because there are not a lot of textbooks at the high school. The majority of the textbooks are on the iPad. And that was one of the things, when we looked at the iPad, three years ago, we did a refresh, when we did the refresh, we did an entire process of trying to identify what would be the best device for our high school students. We went through a very lengthy process, bringing in vendors to show us what their, what all of their products are, including Chromebooks all the way to the iPad, to the Microsoft Surface, all of the, all of the different tablets. And primarily, the students, the parents and the teachers wanted to continue with the iPads. The Chromebooks would not hold the textbooks for our students. So, that's why I'm surprised you're saying that, yes, there are some classes that do still have a textbook, but the majority of our books are on our eBooks.
Okay. I mean, like I said, this is what I was told. I don't have firsthand knowledge. You know, I do know that there are like cloud-based textbooks where you don't have to actually have the textbook on the actual device itself. But again, that's just kind of hearsay. If it is being used in that way, then that sort of answers that question.
Yeah, just another note. Many of the textbooks, even though they are on the devices, are the same price as if we get a print book as well. So, the cost savings piece in terms of physical book versus not physical book doesn't necessarily materialize. Many of the books we use in our classes are collegiate-level books that actually cost more than what we would imagine an elementary textbook and things like that cost, so.
Yeah, I guess it would be more just the cost savings of not having to replace those books that get lost or that get broken or things like that, so.
Yeah, and just for planting seeds, we've had discussions and we now have three years to investigate. We've talked about, you know, potential lease-to-own options with iPads and things like that in the future. So, things like that are out there. We don't see any districts doing something like that, you know, where you have an option to pay a certain amount per year and by the end of the fourth year, student graduates who walk away with an iPad or something like that. Again, a readoption piece would certainly be something to take another look at that, so.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Hi, Pradeep Malam for Gave Place. I heard like the Board has decided that iPad fee is $30. So, did we label this fee? What is this fee for?
The user.
It's a U, go ahead.
The fee is to help subsidize the initiative and also to help with the insurance component that's part of the same price.
Last year, my iPad $85. And the email says clearly that we are paying for insurance. So, out of that $85, to which insurance company, how much we paid?
It's Apple Care. They provide free insurance now, but it's part of the price of the devices. And the $30, Dr., correct me if I'm wrong, is to help subsidize the whole initiative? Because the iPad is used for a lot of non-mandated purposes that help collaborate with education. And that was the reason why there could be a charge, according to the state officials.
No, but the point is, last year, you collected from me as insurance fee. My question is, to which company, to which insurance company, we paid that $85?
So, is your question that last year, the money should have gone to an insurance?
Yeah, that's what, that's what the email says.
So.
Apple Care. Apple Care, that's the insurance.
So, every year, we pay $85 to Apple Care?
That's why it was changed this year, because there was a difference.
Okay, so previous year, so in previous year, that whole $85 went to the Apple Care?
Yes.
I think Apple Care actually costs more than that.
At the beginning of the initiative, the answer is definitely.
No, but last year, it was the third year of that particular iPad it's being used. So, are we paying every year $85 to Apple Care?
Last year, the answer was no. The $85 did not go all to Apple Care. It went towards subsidizing the addition, the initiative and helping with the insurance, which is part of the price of the devices now.
So, that means those $85 is not for insurance. Then you should have clearly, transparently tell me what that $85 or what this $30 is meant for, okay? Don't run the scam like this. I call it as a scam because you said it is for insurance. I have the email on my phone. If you want, I can read it for you. But I'm running out of time. So, if it is insurance, it should go to the insurance company towards that. And there was some posting that if we don't pay or if we reduce this, our budget is fall short of 400K. Is this true? Do we have a budget deficiency? And in finance meeting, there was saying that in three years, if we don't replenish this $1.6 million with this 400K, 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 we have to cut some programs. This, if it is an insurance money, it should not impact any other program and it should not impact cuts or anything. It should be used for insurance purposes. Where is this information is coming out like this? And why it was told us in finance committee meeting that we are going to have cuts in three years if we stop collecting now?
Does anybody from the finance company want to discuss that first and then I'll have Mr. Gorst.
No, this statement is from our BA.
Okay. Mr. Gorst, please.
Bear with me. When the initiative started, there was absolutely an insurance component that was separate from the cost of the unit. That was reflected in the initial policy that was.
That is 2011.
The policy was never updated to reflect the changes that were aggressively negotiated by administration with Apple to reduce the insurance component, which just slightly increased the cost of the unit. So, the Board recognizing that has changed the policy and has also lowered the price of the unit.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to say that I believe Ms. Skirby, Ms. Belko and Ms. Bierman actually reviewed it and picked up on that. So, it's to their credit that it, the pass board, of which I was, you know, a member, of course, we did not update the policy and we did not review that perhaps properly. So, that was something that got by previous boards, but for the three of that, I believe.
And just for clarification, we've not changed the policy yet.
But it's in, it's in revision. We are going to revise.
We will, but it's not been done yet, no.
But they brought it to our attention.
That regulation was saying like maximum of $49, but I was scammed for $85.
Okay.
Well, and that regulation also said that it was for the Monroe Township Insurance Program, not through Apple Care.
Okay. So, my last question, is this $30 for this year is an optional so that I can cover from my own pocket for insurance purposes?
Go ahead.
The insurance is automatically included in the lease price for the units, so there is no separate component for insurance any longer. And the answer to your question is no.
Okay, so why I'm paying this $30 for?
So, we're calling it what it actually is now, right? Go ahead.
Because we can't afford it, so parents have to pay for it. That's really what it is. Yes, I agree with you.
Okay.
I thought it was for insurance.
Out of this 150 million budget, you don't find $75,000 and you are charging high school parents for $30 each out of those 2,500 students? Is this the efficiency that we have? Is this the wiggle room that we have? And we need to wait for like half, one-hour discussion in the, in the finance committee and one-hour discussion in the board meeting we need to spend on this one? I know the time is over, but there is only one person behind me.
Okay, well, well, let's, no, we're not, we're not doing that. Mr. Malam, you have brought up a good point and, you know, sometimes, I mean, I would like not to call it a scam. I would call it an oversight that wasn't picked up before.
It's not just one year. From 2011 onwards, you guys are like charging like this hefty fee for everybody in the high school parents.
Okay.
Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. I want to commend the Board for listening to both sides tonight. Whether things got heated or not, people are passionate about their kids and I do appreciate you guys agreeing to send something to the Governor. Regarding the, going back to the field improvements and the negotiations with the town, I really would like to know when those conversations started? Because I didn't see anything out in the open and really, those conversations should be transparent to the public. And I would ask that your future conversations with the mayor, the town, whatever it is, be made public so that we, there is full transparency, so we can understand what the horse trades are going on behind the scenes. And I don't know why that didn't happen, but I would ask that that happen moving forward. I'm going to go back again to the section of the return plan and I'm going to request that the superintendent either remove or clarify the chemicals in Section D, the chemical statement, that parents can choose any list on, or any product on the list of 570 products. I think it's a nightmare and I think you should be either specifying what they can bring in or getting rid of it completely. We heard last year, we had a ton of brew tabs, you know, we had stockpiles of brew tabs. If we have enough to make our own solution, we don't need parents to start bringing chemicals into schools. Now, that was a big topic in the, in the community. Next one I have here is as regards, in regards to our newly appointed auditor. I see comments in the community, by a few, saying, within two weeks, the auditor, the new auditor is extremely happy, extremely happy with what they're seeing. How does that information get out? How would a member of the public be able to report on what our new auditors are doing within two weeks of being in? I don't have that information. You have the information? You have the information? Where did that information come from? So, I would like some clarity on how that would happen. And then finally, this wasn't on my agenda, but as I sat here tonight and I heard so many different parents come up, regardless of they said things they shouldn't have said, we all get heated. Again, these are our kids. But my phone blows up that we have a famous journalist here posting out, "Board President Lost Control of the Meeting." Anti-masker left the podium to yell at the Board members and point finger at them." We're, we lost control of the meeting? I didn't see anybody go to jail. The Board President said to the security guard, "You don't need to call the police." Nobody was getting killed. And we have people sit in this audience writing things like this? And they want to be on, they want to sit in that chair? Distasteful, unsympathetic to these parents that came up here, condescending, heartless, shameful. And you sitting right online, you want to represent everybody in this town? You have to represent the anti-maskers that you just bashed, that you want votes from? Come on. Parents deserve to speak up for their kids. And in the hour they're sitting here, we have somebody sitting here posting this junk on Facebook? You know what you're going to do in November.
Thank you. I just, I just want to point out. No, I just want to point out one thing, that negotiations, I think under, if I'm correct, under the Open Public Meetings Act, can be held in private and confidential. However, having said that, I have mentioned, you know, very, at times, discussions with the mayor. We haven't gotten anything, you know, permanent yet, so I didn't want to, there is no definitive transaction and there's no horse trading at this point. But negotiations are considered one of the things that could be confidential. But I have mentioned it over the last few months and I think it started around May. Briefly, please.
Just, yeah, thank you. Very quickly, the gentleman's comments or accusation about the auditor and information about that, I mean, had he been in attendance at the finance committee meeting where there was an agenda item for an audit update, we read the minutes, you would have saw my comments about the initial stages of the audit and they were going well. And the auditor was pleased with his risk assessment. So, that's, that's nothing secretive about that.
Okay, so that, just, okay, thank you.
And that was live streamed through the whole community.
Katie Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. I just have two questions. The first one is regarding elementary school orientations. My son is going to be attending Woodland and there is no orientation. I'm just wondering why. Some of these kids have not been in school for 18 months and it would have been nice for them to at least get acclimated to their new building for 10, 15 minutes. So, I'm just wondering why that's not happening. And if it is, I haven't seen it anywhere. I haven't, I've been checking the calendar and it's not there, so maybe you can clarify that. And my second question is, why are we receiving our teachers so late in August? Each teacher has a specific supply list that they are looking for their students to bring in and getting these teachers in, while I can go to the store and buy the supplies that I think they might need, there might be a specific item that maybe I forgot. Now, I'm running around with about a week left before school to try and get this particular thing that the teacher's requesting. So, it might, I'm just wondering why we're waiting so long to get that information out.
I don't have an answer for the Woodland School orientations. I'll have to check with Mrs. McLeod.
I didn't see them for Woodland, Brookside or Apple Garth.
I'll have to check with them. I'm not sure.
Okay. Can she call the?
Yeah, you can contact the principal directly or I can check in with her tomorrow. The supply lists, the supply lists several years ago were created so that it's one supply list for the fourth grade at the school. So, it shouldn't be individualized by teacher.
By teacher.
It's.
It is by teacher.
Each teacher has a supply list posted under their class list, so, and they're all different.
Okay, we're going to have a correction.
I just, I was looking at fourth grade, trying to find fourth grade teachers on Woodland to try and get an idea of the supplies that my son might need and I have no idea.
When I was the principal at Brookside and Dr. Lehman was the principal at Woodland, one of the things we did was align the class list so that that wouldn't happen, so that you'd know what the fourth grade class list was. So. I'm not sure.
We have a leadership meeting tomorrow morning. We'll touch base with the admin team.
Yeah, we'll bring it up with them. But it's normally that the classes are given out that late. It's just a matter of scheduling and students over the summer and we're still getting new enrollment.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none? We will close the public portion. Everyone agreed, approved? Okay. Next on the agenda is, we have a closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJ SA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following. We have matters falling under the attorney-client privilege, including proposed confidential settlement agreement involving a student, 81652, and position of acting interim of schools and review of candidate's application. I actually received, so I don't have the full count. We are north of 15 applicants at this time. We are not going to be making a decision most likely this evening, but I, again, it's up to the full Board. So, we will be giving a cursory review. I have a, literally a luggage filled with the documents for, for our cursory review. So, that will be happening. And again, I don't know how long that's going to take. So, again, it was about the position of acting interim superintendent of schools, deliberation and review of candidate application. Following closed section, session, excuse me, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for the confidentiality, confidentiality no longer exists. Let me tell you how this has worked so far and we're going to discuss procedure going forward. No one has seen, they've been very confidential and sealed applications. I received, I received them late on Monday night, I believe. That was whatever the 16th was. And I just really opened them to sort of put them in order. I haven't read anything yet, but we will all be sort of reviewing them at the same time. And again, they, they need to be highly confidential. Why? Because there are people who are applying that have jobs. They may not want that information to get out. It may jeopardize a position if one or two, you know, if they're not considered. And we have to respect that and confidentiality is, again, you know, appropriate at this time. Okay? Should I have a motion? Do you have a motion to go into closed session?
Some motion. Second.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed or refusal? Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone. It is 12:15 in the morning.
Good morning.
It is no longer Wednesday. It is now Thursday morning. And we are resuming our, from closed session. We do have one resolution and I would like to read it. The resolution approving the settlement of due process petition. Whereas the Board was the respondent in a due process petition, bearing the agency reference number. reference number 2022-33144 and OAL docket number EDS06401-2021. And whereas the board attorney and the superintendent have recommended a resolution of this matter pursuant to the terms set forth in the settlement agreement, and whereas the settlement agreement calls for the expenditure of board funds by way of reimbursement for an out-of-district placement, and whereas the board finds that resolving this matter pursuant to the terms set forth in the settlement agreement is the best, is in the best interest of the district, and now therefore, be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that it hereby approves the settlement agreement in this matter. Do I have a motion?
All moved.
Okay.
Second.
Kane, Kay.
Katie and Karen. Now, I just was making sure Mr. Nikotinsky was making, and any discussion or anything, or shall we call the roll? Mr. Nikotinsky.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella. Mr. Pelori.
I don't know, but if I have to vote, I would vote yes, because I was in present.
No, you were there.
It was in closed session.
It was in closed session.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
While I was here, Mr. Minio?
Yes.
And I say yes.
And did you get Mr. Chiarella? Okay. Then we have a unanimous consent and approval.
I vote yes.
You did? I'm sorry. Mr. Rutzke.
Was it a high school student?
Yes. Okay, so the next Board of Education meeting is actually, we have a special meeting on August 30th, the time to be determined when noticed, because we haven't decided yet. And then the other Board of Education meeting will be September 22nd, I believe. Okay? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
Second? And all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Nobody else wants to stay here?